Central session of the BOC of the City of Tarpon Springs on Monday, December 12th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lunt.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Kulyas.
Here.
Okay, before we get started, we've got, I've got one announcement. Item 4A is deferred to a date to be determined. Item 4A is an ordinance 2022-22 application, has to do with a Land Development Code amendment concerning annexations, and we'll decide when that's going to come back to us, but that needs additional work. Also, what we're going to do, we've got a mixed agenda this evening. We've got the city attorney discussions this evening, and also about a half a dozen Land Development Code ordinances that we need to go through. Those ordinances were deferred from last week when we ran late into the evening and probably would not have done justice to them if we would have listened to them at that time. So, we're going to do that tonight, but let's go to public comments first, and then we'll go to the city attorney categories and discuss those. Are there any public comments? Anything that's not on the agenda?
Good evening, Board and Constitutional officials. Peter Lacks, 514 Ashland Avenue. I'll be brief this evening, but first, let's start with Psalm 24. "The earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, the world in that they dwell therein; for he hath founded it upon the seas and established it upon the floods. Who shall ascend unto the hill of the Lord? Or who shall stand in his holy place? He hath, he that hath clean hands and a pure heart, who hath not filled up his soul upon vanity, nor sworn deceitfully. He shall receive the blessings from the Lord and righteousness from the God of his salvation. This is the generation of them that seek him, that seek thy face, O Jacob, say la. Lift up your hands, O you gates, and be lift up, ye everlasting doors, and the king of glory shall come in." Now, I'm going to just speak briefly on something I spoke about the other night, because I really think it's important that we kind of look at that, especially if we're doing land use and LDC and comp plan amendments. As I mentioned last week, and Renee and even Janine can attest to the amount of time they've had to put in extra with regards to a lot of the things that have been going on. Fees, are we charging enough to recover our staff time? Either we have to look at the fees we currently charge and raise them, or find some way to do some other additional staff impact fee, however you want to define it. We spoke about notifications. As it was mentioned, a number of people that spoke hadn't gotten notified. I know in the, now all our documents talks about hearings, but I mentioned about project notices and triggers, things that go to the Planning and Zoning Department way before it gets to a Planning and Zoning hearing. So, I'm not sure exactly, I'm still kind of thinking about ways that we can put in a process of amplifying whatever we already currently do. I know TRC meetings are public, but again, it's still further down the line. So, those are some of the things I'd like to reiterate, and I also would like to take a moment to thank the gentleman that came here to hear their responses, and let's see how it goes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Delancas. I am, I'm going to ask whether there's anyone else here present that would like to make a public comment. Mr. Jump, do we have any remote access comments?
Online would like to make a comment. Please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs, are there any emails?
We have received no emails for this evening.
None. All right. City Manager La Couris, if I may go to Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Lewis. If you could give us a summary of where we are today, and as far as the, an update is, who's still in contention and so forth, based on the email that you sent us earlier.
Okay, thank you. Janina Lewis, Procurement Services Director, Honorable Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Good evening. First, let's start with the RFP for the Special Counsel Attorney Services. We still have two that gave proposals, and they are still in contention, so that will be among your discussion this evening. As for the second one, the RFP for the City Attorney Services, as of this morning, we had two firms that requested to be removed from the selection. The first one is Waugh Grant. They asked to be removed based on the schedule of the number of boards they would need to attend in 2023. They didn't feel comfortable that they would be able to support, support all of those boards. As did Saxon Gilmore, they made the same reference. They would not be able to support that number of boards with the number of personnel in the firm. So, that leaves one proposal still out there, which is Eunice Salzman. So, that is up for discussion this evening. And the third one is the Litigation Attorney Services, and we haven't had any changes with that one.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lewis. Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to take them one at a time. The first is the Special Counsel Attorney Services, then number two is the City Attorney Services, and number three is the Litigation Attorney Services, and we're going to go through each one and complete those before we go to the next. So, let's start off with the Special Counsel Attorney Services, and, and this will be a discussion among the commission. So, I'd like to start with Vice Mayor Lunt.
So, after review and our conversations and so forth that we had last week, I really don't have any questions or anything for either of the, of the applicants, but I'm fine, I tend towards the investigative quality of Carlton Fields, so I think they've, they've shown that that's what they do, and that's what they're good at, and that's what they, they wanted to do, so that's, that's why I said, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Carlton Fields as well, just to, I don't know who would be in charge of this part of it, but the fact that the individual representing Carlton Fields said they would be open to negotiating travel time and meeting times, I think it was, what it was, so whenever that, if this is selected, this is something that I would like to try to make sure is hammered out.
Yes, based on the fact that this is an RFP, we can negotiate the, the final pieces of the agreement with the firm.
Okay.
And Adam Schwartz from Carlton Fields did say he was willing to negotiate and look over that information.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, if we go with Carlton Fields, I think Mr. Schwartz said that that would be something they would be able to work with the city on, so Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. I also, Carlton Fields, and I tossed back and forth truthfully of, on price as well, and the question that I have that I don't know if it's answerable, is if all the evidence is there, and we don't know that in this special investigation, then I do believe either party, either attorney can find and bring us an evaluation. But if it's not, then I have issues with it. So, I also had concerns about negotiating the price down, because price was an issue as well, but I also remember you saying that getting to the bottom of it was the most important thing, which I also agree with, so I'm going to go along with the vote as long as we can do some negotiation with it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kulyas.
I'd like to go with Carlton Fields. I did like their presentation, and I think, you know, this is, I know it's going to cost us a lot of money, but I think the residents are putting the trust in our hands to, to make that decision, to see what the outcome of is, of all this, and just go from there.
Thank you. Let me, I'm going to say a few things, and, and really, I don't know who's watching or anything like that, but this is for the purpose of anyone watching. Generally, I, you know, we, we know about what the cost would be, about $160,000 for Carlton Fields, and, and if you recall some of the memoranda in the past, you know, for example, the, the one thing I'm having a hard time with as usual, is we're fighting our own residents in, in the litigation with, we're with Morgan, the Morgan Group, fighting against our own residents, which I have an issue with. So, I've reached out to try and talk to the Morgan Group myself, just to see if there was something that we could come to an agreement on. There was no meeting there, there was basically no response, and then it took some time to get our attorneys to actually respond to, to basically approach the Morgan Group, at least their attorneys, to see if there's some agreement that could be made, some settlement as well, for example, to abandon the project and that sort of thing. And you received a memorandum to that effect. It's still attorney-client privilege until the litigation ends, all the litigation ends, but it gave you some money, amounts of money that was in there. Also, we've had some significant discussions with the city manager, exactly about the same thing, and about the amount of time, staff time, it's taken to deal with the Anclaw Harbor Apartments project issue, both in, prior to the application being submitted, but largely after the, the application was submitted, and all the hoops that we've jumped through, and then now we're in some form of litigation, and we're still, it's still a contentious issue, and our staff still spends a lot of time on this, and also, and it's just basically a distraction. It's a distraction, it's something that's hanging out there with the city commission, it's a thing that's hanging out there with, with many, many, many residents, and it's a thing that's hanging out there with the, the city staff. And quite frankly, we need to put this thing to rest one way or the other, and there is no doubt in my mind that it's cost the city several million dollars alone in just wasted effort, time, distraction, lack of being able to move forward on some of the initiatives that we'd like to move forward on, because we continually deal with this thing. So, when you compare that sort of situation to $160,000, $160,000 doesn't amount to much in that regard. The other thing, too, is that Carlton Fields is a preeminent law firm, and I know some of you, you know, there's some questions out there as far as exactly what happened, and Carlton Fields, if that's who we go with, and it looks like that's who we would go with, could come back and say that there's nothing there, or they could come back and say that there's some issues there that we recommend you deal with, at least discuss to see what you want to do. And in both cases, you need to have the confidence that the investigation, or if, whatever you want to call it, the review, the propriety of, of the actions that took place, was done correctly. And the worst thing could happen is if we do some kind of Special Counsel review, and there's a recommendation to go forward with some kind of action, and this commission chooses to move ahead with that action, and that assessment by the law firm was wrong. That's not what we want. So, we need to have absolute confidence that what comes out of the Special Counsel is correct, and I've got the confidence in, in Carlton Fields, again, because of their depth, primarily if you look at them as far as their regional qualifications, they're top-tier in land use and zoning, and that's the sort of thing we're going to be dealing with largely, and also the legal malpractice is another one concerning a lot of the communications that took place, the propriety that we've talked about and things, and, and, you know, we'll see what the, the special investigation comes back with. So, I'm comfortable moving ahead with Carlton Fields. I don't have an issue with the money. I recognize it's a lot of money, but given what we've already, the, the, the distress that this issue has caused the city, I think it's worth getting this thing behind us one way or the other. So, with that, I'd like to have a motion and a second to nominate and approve Carlton Fields as Special Counsel.
A motion to negotiate with Carlton Fields for the position of Special Counsel?
Okay.
A second.
Is that to negotiate or to appoint?
Well, we're going to continue negotiating with them, yes?
Well, I think we, we need to do for the purpose, Ms. Lewis.
You just select one.
What do you want us to do? Do you want us to choose, as far as the RFP goes, that the RFP winner, if you will, is Carlton Fields, or do you want us to authorize negotiating?
Carlton Fields would then be considered your intended awardee, and then we would begin negotiations, and then if the negotiations don't work out, we'd either have to come back and go back to the drawing board, or figure something else out.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Lunt's motion is acceptable?
Yes, they would be the intended awardee with a move forward to negotiate contract.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
A second on that?
I second, yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. My discussion would be, if we can't negotiate, or if we do negotiate, do we have to go back for another vote?
Or RFP?
You, you, I, Ms. Lewis, I think my, I, I think, well, you have to have an affirmative vote to identify someone. I don't think it goes to the next person.
Correct.
Go ahead and clarify that.
At this point, if, if your choice is Carlton Fields, that would be the choice to go to negotiate with. If you choose to go to the second firm on the list, you could do that, that is your option. I don't, I mean, it's technically up to the board how they want to do it. If you want me to come back with the final of the contract that we tried to negotiate, we could do that, you could give me parameters of the negotiation, what you're looking for, we could set that as well at this meeting, it's up to you.
Well, can I amend my motion?
Can I? Before you, before you do that, I wanted to, we would have to have another vote, because we're agreeing to a different price structure that's here right now, so it could be an agreement, it could be not an agreement, so we would need a second vote, the way I see it.
Can we not, I mean, if I can ask the Board's indulgence not to overthink this at this point?
You got it.
And let's just select one.
Okay.
See what the negotiation is. Quite frankly, if, if you want my, my assessment at this point, I'm, whatever is done in terms of a Special Counsel has to be absolutely correct, and we're dealing, the, those that are going to be involved in interviews, Henderson Hill, Henderson Ward, and also Trastagnol are very seasoned law firms. They've been around for a long time, and whoever we have interviewing them has to be equally experienced in terms of the interviewing process.
I agree.
And, and I'm not so sure, one of them would not have an attorney representing them in those interviews as well, so it's going to be a different sort of, of environment that the interviews are going to take place, and then I don't want to assume the simplest, and it could be very complicated, and I think because of that, if we ultimately don't go with Carlton Fields, we need to kind of rethink the, you know, the, the attorneys that are, that are left, obviously, would be Mr. Waugh and his firm, so.
Understood.
So, I'd like it, the Commission's indulgence to keep it simple.
Can I amend the motion? Okay. Motion to select Carson Fields as Special Counsel.
I second that.
Okay. Are there any further discussions?
Yeah, I just got a quick comment. Out of the selection here, I think Carlton Fields is by far the, the way to go. I think the city's going to be well-served in this situation. As I mentioned before in past meetings, I don't agree with the Special Counsel, so that's why I'm not going to vote in favor of it tonight, but I think the selection is there.
Okay, you're going to vote no, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. The other thing, too, Commissioner Kulyas, do you have any comments or?
No.
Okay. The other thing, too, Commissioner Eisner, you mentioned as far as the information being there, the only thing that's there right now is those emails that were identified that were given to me by the Clerk's Office as, as kind of a, from a search that was done for somebody in the past. There's a whole lot of other information that hasn't even been looked at, and I think that's where, and I, I know of some of that other information as well, and that's where the expertise of Carlton Fields. To your point specifically, as far as that information being there, and, and maybe I misunderstood, there's much more information that has to be looked at than just that, so, okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay. Is that a bug?
[inaudible].
All right, let's go to item number two, decision on the City Attorney Services. We've got one applicant remaining on this, and let's start with the Vice Mayor Lunt.
Unfortunately, I wasn't entirely satisfied with the one applicant remaining, so they probably wouldn't get my vote. I think we need to rebuild.
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, Mayor, a couple of things that I would like to at least discuss. There's two applicants that withdrew their applications for the City Attorney Services. I don't know entirely, I just know they can't attend all the meetings for whatever reason. One of the things I think is important to make sure that when an RFP is going out, we, they, everyone knows what they're applying for, and knows when the meetings are, although we as a Board can change the meetings anytime we want with a vote to say either a Board of Commission meetings move, or Board of Adjustment, Board of Planning and Zoning, et cetera, to make it work, and it's, we've done that before in the past. But something I would like to look at is, is there an opportunity for a city attorney to represent or show up to a meeting via Zoom? I don't know if that's possible or not. So, if a city attorney is based in another part of the city, or, I'm sorry, other part of the state, can they attend via Zoom to still give their counsel, still represent at the meeting? That could be, might be something we need to find out as a Board. But right now, I do have a, a concern, although I respect the applicant and his experience individually, I think he is, I think the experience there speaks a lot, I think the whole, firm as a whole is the problem that I have with. There's no backup with city experience. So, if there's other city attorneys that were there, that were, felt like they were qualified, I think that would, I would feel better, but currently, the way that's set up, I don't feel comfortable with selecting the firm that's there right now. If there is other city attorneys, like I said, I think that would be a different story, and then also with the, the split between the Gulfport meetings and this meeting, I just want to, I think we need to vet it out a little bit more, and maybe have a little more of a, if we go through, if we go through another RFP, an opportunity to kind of hash some of these details out before it really comes back to the Board as an interview process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner.
I feel we have the best opportunity to work with Mr. Salzman. I truthfully don't understand what I just listened to. I also think that there needs to be an apology made by the accusations when he was up for his presentation. I just don't understand it, but, you know, you, you put out an RFP, you get three candidates, two candidates remove themselves. If anybody's interpreting or expecting to have six people jumping in next time, they're delirious, so I, I don't understand why that would be the case. He's more than qualified, his firm is qualified, he's actually been in a He's actually been in a position where he's helped us with litigation. He's stepped up to the plate when other attorneys let us down with those. There were accusations made, made by Commissioner Carr that he doesn't report to the board. I don't like individual commissioners speaking for me. I'm the board, you're the board, you're the board. If he's, you know, if he didn't report to Commissioner Carr, that's an individual issue. But I am going to vote for Mr. Salzman. I think he's the best selection. And I, I'm shocked that this whole candidate presentation where he was accused of things that he didn't do and responded professionally, nicely, kindly to false accusations. So that's my take.
Okay. Commissioner Kuyas?
Yeah, I would, I think Mr. Salzman's firm is, is good, but we also discussed potentially picking one firm for each category. And if that, if that was the case, I did have, there, there was another section that could be up for discussion. But with the way the situation is and the, the two firms withdrawing from the proposal, I think it'd be in the best interest of the city for us to do our due diligence just to put another RFP out and, and retain his firm for the temporary services for right now for city attorney services. Thank you.
I've worked with Mr. Salzman a bit now and I don't have an issue with Mr. Salzman. My concern is similarly like we need a little depth in terms of personnel. I had a conversation with Ms. Lewis before, yeah, actually before this morning. I, and also I talked to the city manager, I talked to the, at the mayor's luncheon we had the other day. I was able to speak to Mr. O'Reilly, the city manager of Gulfport, who spoke very highly of Mr. Salzman. But I also basically asked him who other than Mr. Salzman works with them, and he said he's the only one. He covers it all and that's four boards. We've got five. And that's going to be nine boards a month that have to be covered. And that, and that for me, I think is, given the amount of work that we have as far as just ordinances and, and the various boards and and the specialties in each board, I think it's a whole lot for one person. And then of course, when, if there's any issues with Mr. Salzman's absence, who would be covering those, sort of thing. The other thing too is Mr. O'Reilly spoke very highly of Mr. Salzman as a litigator as well. I asked him about that. And so, you know, you've got a champion there with the city manager there in Gulfport. So the one thing that, with all three presentations made the other day, and it wasn't just, as I said, I spoke to Ms. Lewis before this morning, actually late last week. And what I think we were missing is the fact that the city attorney is not just this commission's attorney. It's the attorney for the entire city staff and all the boards. Which even though there isn't going to be a sitting attorney at, other than the, for us, it would be us, the P and Z board, the board of adjustment, the historic preservation board, and the code enforcement board, five of them. There's going to be times when the city attorney has to get involved, the sustainability committee, the public art committee, especially the public art committee that I know our city attorney in the past has dealt a great deal with them. And so there's a lot of work that needs to be done. The, the thing that I don't know is, is I've, even though I've had good conversations with Mr. Salzman, I don't know what his, for sake of a better word, his bedside manner is, sitting here next to us. And then also the same thing with the other boards and I suspect it would be very, very professional. But I, I would also like to confirm this because this is going to be for us a long-term commitment. I don't think it's something that we want to sign a three-year contract and then, you know, two months later or something, find out that this isn't going to be working out. I don't want to do that. I want to make the decision the right way. I'm not sure about the Zoom, but also we talked about perhaps, Ms. Lewis, as far as how do you solve that problem as far as seeing somebody in action? And perhaps any, you know, in an R and P, request that some video be provided of that attorney in action at whatever city commission meeting or whatever board that there are. And then also, which I think finally caught up with everybody, is the matrix of all of our boards. And then also if, if eight, if, if one attorney isn't going to cover all of them, then what other attorneys in their, in that firm that is competing for the city attorney services would be there? And if there are other city attorneys, they would have to be here as well so we could see who they are and perhaps interview them as well as part of the process. That would be all submitted as part of our, an RFP. We didn't do that this time. And then the other part is letters of reference in terms of, for example, one letter of reference from a peer, which would be another attorney, and maybe a couple of letters from who they represent now, whether it's Gulfport or some housing authority somewhere else or, you know, the city that they're pursuing. Those are the sort of things that we did not do this time that, as far as the city attorney services, I, if we go with an RFP, that's what I, I would like to see in the future. Also, I know that we didn't advertise the, the RFP on the Florida Bar's website as far as potential commissions for attorney services. We didn't do that. I'm, I'm not sure who we did. I think we, we got some fine firms that responded to the RFPs, but I think we could have gotten maybe a little more exposure as well in that regard. As far as, at this point, as again, we're down to one applicant. I don't want to be put in a position to, to basically take what is left. I'm sure Mr. Salzman would be able to help us. I just don't know whether, long-term, that would be viable with all the activity and work he's got with Gulfport and the work that he would have with us. And, and of course, the litigation that he's doing for us right now. So I would support going out to RFP again if we, if, if we want to.
Is it possible to have, because I know I heard what you said about having, knowing about bedside manner and all, why can't we have a trial? Does it have to be a three-year contract?
No, no, that, I mean, that's interesting. We, we, Ms. Lewis, that was the first thing that we talked about. Ms. Lewis, if we did another RFP, but she came back and said, that may not be too practical. And for example, if we have two meetings a month, let's say, let's say you go out to, you're, you're talking about have Mr. Salzman sit in right now? For, not right now, but as far as?
Because anybody that you would be taking in, you don't have a clue on their bedside manner, so.
Let me ask, I think I already know the answer to that, but Ms. Lewis, if you could answer that, what Mr. Eisner is saying to allow Mr. I, Mr. Salzman to sit in on a couple of meetings to see how he does as part of this RFP?
As far as this RFP, you can make the agreement as long as you choose. I mean, we, yes, we did say we'd do a three-year initial period, but if you want to go shorter, that is the board's decision.
Okay. It would be up to the commission if that's what they would want to do?
You have, you have my answer.
Okay. Would you be interested in something like that?
You're asking me if I'd be interested in having Mr. Salzman participate?
I think the idea is to sit up here through a couple of meetings and to see whether he fits in. But then as, you know, if you, I mean, if you want my observation, you're, it's your turn, but we've got the other boards as well that.
I understand that, and that's why I've made my, my statement earlier. No disparity to Mr. Salzman, but we do have nine different meetings a month at, at a minimum. And also, we also need a litigation attorney, so.
Right. Commissioner Carr?
No.
I know where you are, Commissioner Eisner, Commissioner Kuyas?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see another RFP and hopefully at a good faith, the, maybe the city manager can work on with Mr. Salzman for another temporary extension for the time being. And maybe we could get our probationary period in, in that time. If it, you know, requires us to switch a day of a BOC meeting, I'm all for it, you know? Whatever it takes to try to get that probationary period, but I would like an RFP to just see some other firms apply.
Ms. Lewis, Commissioner Kuyas mentioned the, the interim service agreement. Can you kind of give us a rundown on that and on, as far as the deadline, when that term ends? And then what is next?
Okay, I don't technically have the full date in front of me, but we entered into the interim agreement with Yunus Salzman roughly mid-October, and we did a 90-day originally with an option to extend another 90 days. So if we do October, November, December, so roughly mid-January, we'd have to go into the extension portion for another 90 days. Takes us about April timeframe.
Okay. And that would be the same case for the, Mr. Salzman is on as a litigator, but whoever we have assigned as interim city attorney services, that would be the same timeframe for them as well?
Yes, we have two other firms currently on contract, and if we want to choose to extend with all three, we could do so.
Okay. Yes.
I believe we've hurt ourselves this long being with interim attorneys. I think it's better, and this is my take, that Mr. Salzman try this for X amount of time and see if it's something that he can handle and we could handle. I appreciate what he's done as far as in litigation. But because we had a situation prior where the attorney possibly was doing the work of the attorney and litigator, we had issues with that. I spoke with Janina about the possibility, since in the presentation we had Mr. Salzman say our litigation is not much. Now, I understand on this RFPs, we can't appoint him to both. But there is a possibility that we can keep him on as a litigator and also have him on as an interim time limit to see how he works out. And then we have an attorney here that's present. He's very familiar with our situation and we have coverage. And this is, he gets to see if he likes the way we are and we get to see if we like the way he is. And at that point, we would also just about be coming into a new board as well. So that's, that's my take on it. This to me makes common sense and it's a wise maneuver to do to try to re-address another RFP and then put it, put it out and try to get feedback and then schedule, you're talking about a couple more months, which is, gives us next-to-no advice for anything else that we need to have. Just because we have a special counsel coming up, we still need to have advice on how we are going to handle our day-to-day base, you know, running the city, so that's.
No, I understand. And I, I think your, your, your comments are well-meaning and I think, and I don't want to speak for the commission, but I, I don't know that that's going to change anybody's mind.
That's okay.
Yeah. And if we want to move forward with an RFP, I believe, Vice Mayor Lunt, your light's on. Do you have anything else you want to say?
Yeah, I just, you know, adding on to Mr. Eisner, Commissioner Eisner's statement, we have the facility right now to extend general counsel agreement with Mr. Salzman for another three months. It would take us up to the April timeframe, is that what I heard?
That's correct.
Which in effect would give us the same period of time to feel each other out as we're going through another round of, of searches anyway. So in effect, that's already going to happen, whether we choose him tonight to do a temporary thing or don't, because he's going to be temporary for, for as long as our, our extension is agreed upon. So I think we could move forward with, with the agreement that we're looking for somebody else and just extend Mr. Salzman's current contract without having to go through a whole big deal.
Ms. Lewis, if, yeah, I'm going to ask you, I'm sorry, is there, are there any other comments? In order to put the city attorney services out the bid, we have to reject all, all proposals and then cancel the RFP, is that correct? Is that the terminology to use?
Yes, we, we would resolicit, yes. We would cancel the current RFP, reject all the bids, and resolicit with revamped scope of work and evaluation factors.
Okay. May I have a motion to that effect if that's what the?
Do you want a public comment first or do you want, do you want a public comment first or do you need a motion?
We should go to public comment. I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you.
Here to Lax 514, Ashland Avenue. I think you're coming to a logical conclusion as far as not the quality of Mr. Salzman's service, but the ability to basically cover all the meetings. And if you go out for a new RFP, you're going to have new guidelines that y'all can discuss. And during that time, Mr. Salzman can work out however boards he can work. And when the new RFP comes out, if he wants to apply at that time again, he's more to free to. But I want to throw something out that was thrown out about 10 years ago when Jeff Larson came on the board. And you've heard Chris mention it and see Emmanuel Curse will know exactly what we're talking about.
Chris as in Robowski or as in Mayor Alahoussain?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Is it not time, maybe, to hire our own in-house attorney? You have your own attorney, they have all the boards, they cover everything. Hire a paralegal, so they have an assistant. You could set up that department probably for $200,000 a year. Base salaries for both, costs and stuff would be extra depending on what they need to do. But if you look at what you've probably paid over the last year or over each calendar year to Trast to know, you've probably spent more than $200,000. And nothing to diminish the quality of any of the firms here, but you're going to have someone that hopefully would stay here and learn all the codes and things and help our staff in how the boards, various boards, translate their policy and ideas into those codes. So go out for your RFP, but maybe you might want to think about potentially setting up your own city attorney instead of hiring out other firms. And nothing wrong with having other firms, because like you've mentioned, you know, if Mr. Salzman can't, can't come, someone else comes. Or we had with Trast, we had Erica, Erica and Ms. Myers or that last guy, Mr. Mata or something, you know, so there's been backup. But I don't know, maybe it is time again to rethink setting up our own city attorney office. And just wanted to throw that into the mix. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vilakis. Are there any other public comments?
Good evening, John Kulyanas, 1020 Peninsula Avenue. I'm, I'm confused by the whole conversation. You, you all made the point, all of you, obviously except for Commissioner Eisner, you made the point that, that the remaining firm didn't have the staff necessary for coverage. And now you're entertaining conversations about a test drive. So I, I didn't understand where that was going.
What do you, what do you think you heard?
That's what I was kind of hearing. Hey, let's try him out, but then you guys all. That's what I was kind of hearing, hey, let's try him out, but then you guys all made the point that he didn't have the staff necessary, so I didn't understand where this conversation was going, entertaining the test drive. So I would, I agree that you should reject the RFP as it is now and put it out. But to test drive a firm that you have all said doesn't have the capacity, didn't make any sense to me. But I'm just sitting out here.
Thank you, Commissioner-elect Kouyannis. Would I'd like, if I may, ask for a motion to reject all the proposals? I'm sorry, Mr. Jump upstairs, yeah. Mr. Jump, are there any public comments from, by remote access? Thank you.
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand, I'll allow the first person in.
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you Commissioners Robert Rockline, 755 North Lake Boulevard. Sorry I can't be there tonight, kind of congested, head cold and such, but felt it was important to comment that I feel that recasting a wider net and assessing what you catch in that, both in quantity and quality, would be the best course of action with this. I think that the RFP was not probably sent out, you know, to as many venues that attorneys are used to searching for that it could have been, and no fault to the staff with that, this is something that hasn't been done for a long time. But the ability to use Mr. Salzman in the interim will give you, you know, as was previously commented, a good test drive, and that's two-sided, both for him to see if he can, you know, pedal fast enough to cover all the bases, or, you know, if the, like you said, his bedside manner and such is appealable to, especially the Board of Commissioners. So I think you have the opportunity to have your cake and eat it too for a change with this, and I would suggest doing both, retaining Mr. Salzman for the additional lengthy days, and also recasting that RFP to the other venues like the Bar Association and such. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rockline. Are there any other comments, Mr. Jump?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay. If I may have a motion to reject all the bids or proposals and to cancel the RFP and to go out for a new RFP for city attorney services.
I'll make a motion to reject all bids for city attorney services and send out a new RFP for city attorney services and allow Ms. Lewis and the city manager to negotiate extension of a temporary 90-day city attorney services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kouyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
No.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiades?
Yes. For the record, Commissioner Kouyannis, Commissioner-elect Kouyannis, I know very well, so sometimes I might little throw a barb at him while he's still a commissioner-elect, but I'm sure things will be different once he gets up here, so. Let's go to the next item, which is litigation attorney services, and we're going to do the same thing, start out with Vice Mayor Lunt first. We've got, let me just go over this right now, this one is the one that we've got, the, Ms. Lewis, did Mr. Scaglione withdraw from this?
No.
He did not, okay.
No, it's still four firms.
Okay, so we've got Eunice Salzman, Mr. Wall, Saxon, and Clark Hill, I believe, still in the running on this. So let me go to Vice Mayor Lunt first.
So, after listening last week and consideration and reading through everybody's, excuse me, RFP responses several times, I'm still of the mind that we should select Eunice Salzman for litigation.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I just want to bring up something that's in the charter, it's section 18 of the city attorney. We don't currently have a city attorney sitting on our board right now to be able to opine on this, but there's a, I think it's the second sentence, it says, "The city attorney shall defend the city, its officers and employees in litigation involving the city when no legal conflict exists, report to the same Board of Commissioners, and shall prosecute violations of city ordinance. The city attorney or a representative from the city attorney's office shall attend and advise all quantitative or board meetings of the city." So, I, do I think we have three qualified firms to pick tonight for litigation, 100%? Am I comfortable with what our city charter says about city attorney services and litigation? I'm not comfortable with that right now, and I don't have anybody to bounce it off of either. So with that, I think we almost need to put a pause in this one to go along with maybe the RFP or see if we need to put these together, reach out to one of the city, one of the attorney services to have them opine on what the charter actually says from a legal standpoint. I think that would probably be the best avenue to take in this situation tonight. So with that, I mean, I do like, like I said, all three of the firms that are, I'm sorry, four of the firms, I felt comfortable with the three that are in our presence tonight to select from, but I'm just not, I'm not there with our city charter yet.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner?
To be short and sweet, Eunice Salzman is the route I'm going to go. I like what he's done so far with litigation, and I have no issues with him continually.
As permanent or interim?
As permanent.
Permanent, okay. Commissioner Kouyas?
I would like to see Commissioner Carr's concerns get addressed at some point, but I do feel comfortable with Eunice Salzman for litigation services, and I would take on the recommendation of just being billed hourly as well, with that agreement, so, thank you.
Okay, well, the, a couple of things, one, if we choose to go with Mr. Salzman and we enter into a contract as a permanent litigator, all these contracts are at the discretion of the commission, they could be terminated at any time, I mean, that's typically the way we do these contracts. I don't think it would be any different in this case. Secondly, as Mr. Salzman said, there isn't a whole lot of work right now for litigation, and I would hope that he would be interested in this contingent on getting some clarification as Commissioner Carr brought up in the future. The only other thing that, and I think as Mr. Salzman himself referred to, I think your proposal was a retainer, I think, and you recommended that at this point to go based on hourly rates, and so I think that other than, that would be the same drill that we would go through with Mr. Salzman as we would go through Carlton Fields as far as selecting and then negotiating a fee for that, an hourly rate for that. And we'll see how it goes, I mean, this is the best, I think, that we can do at this point. I don't have an issue with Mr. Salzman. The one thing that he is doing for us right now is the North Anclot, I'm sorry, not North Anclot, Anclot Harbor Properties issue with Morgan Group versus, and City of Tarpon Springs versus Concerned Citizens. That's pretty much it, and there isn't a whole lot there. The other litigations, I think C. Emmanuel Kers, there were like two or three other cases, is that right? That he's helping us with?
About that, yeah.
And then, of course, the, contrary to what our charter says, the city, Florida League of Cities assigns their own litigator or legal representative for whatever the cases are involving lawsuits against the city. So I understand what you're saying, and maybe that needs to be reconciled as well. And quite frankly, if we need an interpretation of the charter, and unlike what we did before, we changed it, we're unlike asking the city attorney his opinion, and we would reconvene the Charter Review Commission and ask them to provide us an opinion, and I would suspect it would be an opinion, given the circumstances, and then also at the very next election, we would probably have some amendment to that provision, if that's what the Charter Review Commission says. If you recall, we had a, an issue over the internal auditor where I thought it was fairly clear, but that the city shall have an internal auditor, but a city attorney in the past interpreted that as not necessarily a full-time city attorney, or internal auditor, nor does, do they have to be a city employee. And this last city revision, I'm sorry, commission actually amended that, put it to the residents, it got changed, and we've got Mr. Pullos, who's our internal auditor now. So I understand what Commissioner Carr is saying, and we've got to be careful in these matters. But as of right now, we don't have a city attorney, we're going to go out to, for a new RFP and put that out, the proposal, and so we may be talking about this once we choose a city attorney in the April timeframe of 2023. Would you agree with that part? Okay. Vice Mayor Lunt, you have some?
I haven't had a chance to actually read all the code that Commissioner Carr brought up, but unless that section says all litigation and all of the job duties described for them, I think we're safe with the charter right now. If it doesn't say all, that means we can have more than one.
Yeah, I, is again, I don't want to get into interpreting the charter this evening, I think we've got a solution in front of us. Mr. Salzman, if you'd like to come forward, you are under contract to us, so I'll allow.
The simple solution is to just get an attorney general opinion. Present the question to the attorney general, we brief it, and they give us an opinion as to your concern. It's relatively straightforward, and that way you're not looking at anybody else who's trying to give the opinion for their own purpose or whatever, you're getting it an independent. So that's always an option to look at, and it's relatively quick.
It's a good recommendation, thank you, thank you very much. You're okay with that, too?
Yep.
Okay.
There is no all in there, though.
Now, the other thing, too, I think we're okay, I was going to say, we, there is this, we've canceled the one RFP, we, we're good, I don't need to say anything else about that. Is there, are there any other comments on this, public comments? Mr. Delakis, anything? Mr. Kouyannis? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, if there are no other discussion on the commission, may I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion to appoint Eunice Salzman and Jensen as a litigation attorney while also going off the recommendation by Mr. Salzman about getting a opinion on our charter.
City attorney, I'm sorry, yes, I understand.
Attorney General?
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The other thing, we will be negotiating, negotiating free fee structure with that as well, I think, which would be different than I think what was submitted by Mr. Salzman, if I remember correctly.
Sure.
Right. Oh, you have, okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but I recommend the.
Yeah, I'll amend that, that there is a negotiation for the hourly versus retainer fee.
Okay. Is there an amendment on the second on that?
Second is amended.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kouyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiades?
Yes. Okay, I appreciate everybody.
Can I get just one clarification with you now or later?
Of course, yes, you're the city manager.
So, tonight, you couldn't have appointed, for instance, Mr. Salzman to two positions because of the way the bid went out. You've got Janina working on another bid with some criterias. She probably needs to either understand tonight or before if that restrict, do you want to consider if when she puts out that bid, that restriction of separate attorneys, there has to be a decision whether that goes out in the second bid or not, when she puts it out, because the first one, you couldn't have pointed one person to two of those, the way it went out, you're starting a new one. Did you want to put a restriction in that or not, or open it up so you can either choose the same one or choose a different one from the litigation? That's something she would need to know when she's writing that up.
Okay. Let me just start off with a couple of comments, and then I'd like to hear from the other commissioners. First, we, when we first set up these RFPs, we wanted basically a separation independence between the three, not Commissioner Eisner. The special counsel needs to remain independent, Mr. Schwartz made that very clear, that they're not going to be doing any litigation, because it would incent, it would taint the objectivity of the investigation by incentivizing that they, if they do find something, they would be litigating. So we, that's the clear part. So there would be a separate litigator if that came forward. The other part is, as far as involving that in the city attorney, whatever litigation, if any, comes out, I'm sure it's going to be very, very complex, and I think it would take a whole lot of concentration on whoever's going to be the litigator in order to deal with it. And I want, from my perspective, I'm hoping after the first of the year, after January, actually, after epiphany and everything settles down, we'll be able to hit into some kind of a stride for moving the city forward with new initiatives that have been sitting there waiting for this thing to get behind us and dealing with it. So, you know, I know what our charter says, I think that what we could do is, and what you're saying is that we would, what you're saying is, when do we put this RFP out, right?
Well.
It's a timing issue as well.
Well, it's the fact of, did you want, the one you chose for litigation to be able to apply for the city attorney?
Yeah, do you want to disqualify Mr. Salzman from applying for the city attorney position again? Just a question.
If Mr. Salzman's interested in that, I mean, I don't want to start making any assumptions here this evening. I think the question is very simple, do we want any litigation at this point involving Anclot Harbor? Here's the other discussion I've had with the city manager, we're not going to know anything concerning any future litigation until the special counsel's in it a while, and I'm hoping that perhaps by April timeframe, he'll be able, that firm will be able to shed some light on us as to whether there's anything that may come out of this. And if that's the case, then I really think we should have a separate litigator, not to get them involved with city matters and try to deal with that, and also dealing with the litigation involved that may be coming out of the special counsel. If the special counsel comes out and says, "Look, there really doesn't look like there's going to be anything, we are going to recommend some policies and things like that," then it may be easier to have the litigator, as we've always done, part of the law firm is a city attorney. Although, I'm not sure I'm completely comfortable with that, given, I just, it's, I don't know how much interaction, the worst thing you can have is have two attorneys in the same law firm, one in the litigation, one the city attorney, and them disagreeing about how to go forward in a lawsuit. And that's my concern. There's got to be one person that is in charge that's responsible. I don't want to put this commission, says, "Well, I think of this way, I think of that way," and the other person says, "I want to go this way, what do you think?" I don't think that's a fair question to this commission, we're not attorneys, and so I've got a little concern about that. So I don't, I wouldn't mind waiting a while before we make that next, before we put that RFP out, maybe after the holidays in January, and then, and then let's reevaluate where we are at that time. I don't know how long it takes to get the city, I'm sorry, a state attorney's, it's a state attorney, right? it's a state attorney, right?
Attorney general.
Attorney general's opinion, um, as far as the, um, this charter provision that we've got. But I'd like to embark on that certainly prior to, uh, in the next week or so, if we've got time recognizing the holidays. But as soon as we can, get that to the attorney general, let them work on that, and get back to us on that as well, and see what they've got to say before we go out for an RFP. That way we can address what City Manager LaCours is talking about. I, I don't know how that sounds to everybody, but Vice Mayor Lunt?
You know, I'm of a mind that litigation these days takes a certain amount of rigor and focus, um, and I'm not completely satisfied, nor have I ever been completely satisfied, that a general city attorney firm can both litigate and advise at the same time. I think those things are somewhat aligned, but, but not totally, especially in today's somewhat rather litigious area. So I'm, I'm of a mind to keep them separate. If you want to ask the question of the, the attorney general with regards to the city attorney charter with section 18 of our, our city charter, that's, that's one thing. It says shall, it does not say will, which means there's some flexibility in there, and I'm sure the attorney general will, will probably back up my statement there. If you want to delay going out for a city attorney until January or whatever, um, I'll agree to that, but I don't think it's necessary.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, two things. I don't think Eunice Salzman and Jensen should be disqualified from applying for the city attorney ser, city attorney services. I think he, he's heard tonight, though, if he were to apply, that he would need to strengthen, I guess, the, his, his staff. And then from the, an RFP standpoint, I'm fine with sending it out next week as long as staff is here, um, or working on it, and then putting in the end of January reply. There's no need to, to hold that up, I don't think.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
I agree with Commissioner Carr, you said exactly, word for word.
Okay. Commissioner Koulias?
I do agree when it, when it comes to, I believe both Vice Mayor and Carr, when it comes to Commissioner Carr, to get an RFP out as soon as we can, but we understand our timing, but have it stay open until late January, early February, just to, it's the new year, holiday season, most, you know, firms, companies really don't get back into the groove of, uh, work until mid-January, you know? So that's something to consider. I just want to make sure we have just as much exposure and for, uh, for advertising to get all, all the people to apply as possible. But, uh, Mayor, you, you did bring up a, a good point and, um, some regarding maybe a, a separate litigation if something were to come out of any type of findings with, um, the Ancoe Harbors. So that would be something I'd be open for. But I, I think Mr. Salzman's firm is, is great for, overall for litigation, for, um, long-term for the city, for usually everything we handle.
Okay. So what does this all mean? We don't put the RP, we put the RP out, but don't, don't close it until, somebody said, I think Commissioner Koulia, you said January? But we could extend the contract till April. I think we should get some, you know, if it doesn't hurt anything, we could get an opinion from the attorney general as far as this.
It doesn't hurt anything. It's mid-January. Uh, Commissioner Koulias is, is dead on when he says, now is not the time to put an RFP out there.
Okay.
I think you get response, but I think we want to be as broad as possible. I mean, I know we did demand star and so forth. We might want to publish in some legal affiliated publications just to widen our scope. But the time to prepare that, to change the RFP, or decide whether this RFP should be exclusionary or not, et cetera, et cetera, we probably, a couple of weeks, it's Christmas time, it's not going to.
So if I understand, we would, um, we would issue the RFP in January and perhaps close it sometime in March? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it depends where in January. I don't think an RFP needs two months to respond to. I think maybe six weeks would be excessive. But typically, an RFP, I'm thinking a legal firm ought to be able to respond in 15 to 21 days.
Ms., Ms. Lewis, um, you want to come up here and give us a hand here?
The, the timeframe, what timeframe did we do this one? How many days was it for the RFP?
For the city attorney, we did, uh, 30 days, just based on all the factors of being the city attorney. The other two, we did, I think it was 15 days, because it was just a strict focus.
I'm back with a little 30 days.
Commissioner Eisner, you've got your light on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I need a little bit of clarity. What do we do, what do, will we be doing without a city attorney now? Do we have Salzman temporarily? Do we have Jackson and Jackson temporarily? How are we going to go forward? Not just on us, but planning?
Well, we've got, we've got two law firms, um, under retainer for city attorney services. Mr. Salzman's firm helped us out in an emergency basis with Ms., Ms. Castalie, Casti, I'm sorry, Gastalige, and, uh, for a couple of meetings, but that was as a result of the Voss firm pulling out, is that correct?
Yeah, and we still have, the temporary ones expire, like I said, mid-January, and I would say I'd renew them, I'd renew them all from this, unless I've got it wrong. I'd try to do a renewal on, on the ones that we have.
Yeah.
Unless I hear otherwise.
So my second thing is, um, I would like to, as we do this trial, I would like to hear from Mr. Salzman to see if it's something, as said earlier, that he can handle, or that he could pick up extra staff to handle. So I'd like to go with that as well. I'd like to see what that, how that works out.
Okay, well, let, let's cut to the chase on all of this, because I, I don't want to sit here and chase ourselves around the tree on this stuff. I, I think basically there's a question of whether a litigation attorney can also be the city attorney. That's number one. It was suggested that we go to the attorney general for an opinion. That's number two. I think that's generally a good idea to do that.
I agree.
Number three, we've got two law firms that are already on retainer for city attorney services that have, in, in my opinion, have served as well. You'll see a little bit of that handiwork tomorrow night, and so I'm comfortable with continuing on the way we're doing. Mr. Salzman has been selected as a litigating attorney this evening. We'll be getting some exposure and being able to talk to him and things of that nature. I think at this point, we need to decide, when are we going to put this RFP out for, um, the city attorney services, and then when are we going to close it? All this other stuff with regard to Mr. Salzman, you know, doing this and doing that, and, and is, is great, but let's get the work done tonight, and then between now and the time we decide on a city attorney, um, we'll have ample time to discuss this again. So, two questions. When do we want to send the RP out, the new RFP on city attorney services? Mid-January?
My vote's ASAP. I'm ASAP, as soon as possible.
Soon as possible.
I'm okay with that as well.
It could take 45 days to close. It gives a chance to get through the holidays if it needs to, to be open a little bit longer. Closes mid-February potentially.
Yeah, I would like it to close no earlier than January 31st.
Close January 31st?
No earlier than Jan, January 31st. What do you think, Vice Mayor?
If, if we may give Ms. Lewis a little bit of time to put this thing together, as far as, as soon as possible, I would say maybe, um, after the first of the year to get through these holidays first, unless you think Ms. Lewis should, could be able to do that before then.
Ms. Lewis?
I mean.
Again, be, be realistic with what we have, um, getting it out by the, you heard when the ending date was, but when realistically, you've heard what they've, they've said for a new RFP and the things to add. Um, with your other duties you have to do for the end of the year, when do you think is a reasonable time for you? And give yourself the leeway of time, the reasonable dates you can get this on the market.
I'd like to have at least two weeks to put the new package together, so that we're clear on the direction of the evaluation factors that you're looking for, uh, just to make sure that you're, you're getting the most out of, of the written information in the submittals, and then also when they come to interview, that you're, you know, you're getting all the information upfront that you really need. So I, I think the first of, the first week of January, I could have everything ready to go and to put out. Uh, we could do certainly 31 days.
Make 30 days from, 30 days from beginning of January, when you can get it out in 30 days would go past the 34th, maybe February 2nd or 3rd.
It'd go into the first week of February, sure. And then, you know, I think that's enough time for professional firms to understand our requirements. A lot of people are aware of what a city attorney, you know, generally, the scope of the service, um, as far as them putting their submittal packages together, that's what takes the most time for firms.
30 days, and I just, I don't know how long it takes. If it's, if this commission's interested, if you're not interested, we need to know that now. If you're not interested in getting an attorney general's opinion on the charter, if you're interested in it, I don't think we're going to get anything back in, by January on that.
I think we should, I think we should set a timeframe of getting it out the door by January 13th.
Okay.
And that way it gives Jan, lots of time to.
I, I honestly don't understand what the urgency is. I mean, we've got interim contracts that take us through April, the middle of April. I, you know, I just want to do this right. I don't want to rush through this. This is going to be an attorney that's going to be sitting next to us for at least my next two, I, you know, God willing, my next two and a half years. And I would hope that, you know, those of you that run for re, um, you know, re, reelection will be working with that same attorney for another five or six years. So I want to make sure we do this right.
January 13th is a month from now, is that?
Right, no, no, I, I don't have an issue with taking it out, sending it out then. And, and when do we get it back? I, I don't see what the urgency is to get it back. Within 30 days would be February, I would say the first of March. That's what my preference would be. That's six weeks.
Do you think an additional two weeks of prep time is going to help legal firms respond to it?
If, I think the longer that's out there, the more exposure you're going to get.
Right.
And that's, I mean, maybe I'm wrong about that.
I'm fine with that. It's only two weeks, it's not going to kill us. I just, I, for a person that does RFPs for a living almost, or responds to them, I don't see the need for the timeframe, but if you'd like to extend it for another two weeks, I, I'm.
No, no, no. So you're saying the middle of January?
To get it out the door.
And then when would we close it?
A 30-day period to respond.
Okay. Is that?
I think that gives firms enough time to get back in the, the groove of things and, and see who all wants to apply, absolutely.
I'm fine with 30 or 45 days.
Commissioner Eisner?
I'm in agreement.
Okay, may I, let's vote on that, so there's no misunderstanding later. May I have a motion in a second to that effect?
Yeah, I want to hear this motion.
You want a motion to, uh, for 30 to 45 days?
I mean. I'll make a motion.
I got was to get the bid out by, by the 13th of January, and it'd be a 30-day bid process.
I'll make that motion what City Manager stated.
Okay, so we've got a couple of, one commissioner nodding his head, and another commissioner talking. You made the first motion. Is, are you, are you in agreement with the city manager's motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Koulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiottis?
Yes. Okay. Again, thank you all for everyone's cooperation this evening. If these things could get a little bit frustrating, and, uh, we all maintained our composure, and I very much appreciate that.
We haven't done this in 26 years or so, so it's a new experience.
Yeah, I just hope we don't do it again too soon after that. All right, the, uh, Ms. Lewis, thank you very much for everything that you've done, and, and also the discussions you've had with the commission, um, on questions, so.
Yes, thank you, Janine. You've been a gem in this thing, so thank you for all your work.
We're going to move on to item four, and what we're going to do, this is land development code, um, uh, smart code and comprehensive plan amendments, and these are the first readings. These were deferred from last week. There's, um, there's eight of them. One has been deferred, which is item A, uh, to a date to be determined, which leaves us seven. And so we're going to take these one at a time. I, I talked briefly with Ms. Vincent before the, uh.
Sure, but am I sitting in the meeting?
Well, I was just, I was just going to.
That you, that you had me come in? I just can't, if you want me to, I'm happy, uh, whatever the board wants, I just don't want you to be the legal counsel.
It's up to you, sure.
Yeah, sure. That's good. He's making his, supposed to make his debut tomorrow night, but tonight's.
Welcome, Andy.
I'm here, I'm happy to help.
Amen.
By the way, congratulations, I think.
Careful what you ask.
So, um, I spoke with Ms. Vincent briefly before the meeting. We're going to take these one at a time. Do you want a second to set up, or just have Ms.?
The only thing I didn't receive is the full package.
The only thing that we've got is, um, I mean, if, if you want to go online to City Commission Agenda, I don't, you mean a paper copy?
Mayor?
I just got the agenda.
If you can take, like, a, you know, a very brief break, I can print out a package for the attorney.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Let's, let's take a five-minute recess, and we'll reconvene at, at eight o'clock. Um.
That's eight minutes.
And if you go to City Commission.
What is the?
Yeah, check.
Section E, item five. As far as both quasi judicial and legislative applications being done on the same agenda, I don't think that should be the case either, but my personal opinion. No more, no further questions on this. Other than thank you.
What you're saying is you don't have an issue with doing both of them the same night?
I do have an issue with doing both of them. I like the or stricken from those two states.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, I've got a question about the temporary use permit for, I'm sorry, are we, are we going through A, B, C? Okay.
You mean as far as the ordinances go?
Yeah.
Yeah, A's been deferred, so B is what we're working on.
Okay, Coastal High has no application process, no questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. I also have an issue with, what is it? E five as well, and I'm glad Vice Mayor brought it up. I'm in agreement to what he said. I don't see that it should appear on the same agenda.
I agree. Commissioner Kuyt.
Well, I'd thank Vice Mayor for being able to catch it, and it, I know there could be small projects where it, that may, you know, expedite the, the application, but ju- just for the security of, you know, ju- just boards not taking advantage of that. I'd like to agree with the Vice Mayor as well on, on both E two and five.
You got general agreement on that, Ms. Vincent?
Yes.
Is there anything else that is in the ordinance that catches your eye? Okay, if I may have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance on its first reading with the requested change.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-23 with requested changes to E subsection two, removal of or, and E subsection five, removal of or.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
I just wanted to add that if this is approved on its first reading, the second reading will be tomorrow night and was published in the Tampa Bay Times by total, title only, on November 2nd and November 30th of 2022. Commissioner Kuyt.
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner.
Yes.
Commissioner Carr.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt.
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotos.
Yes. Okay, item four C is an amendment to the coastal high hazard area. Mr. Salsman, if you could read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022 dash 24, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the city of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article eight, amending section 122.12 Hurricane Shelter Impact Study, and Article nine, adding section 149.00 Coastal High Hazard Area Development Regulations, and section 149.01 CHHA Design Standards, providing for separability, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. That is ordinance 2022 dash 24, read by title only on first reading. The second reading will be held December 13th, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Salsman. Same measure includes.
Thank you, this is ordinance 2022 dash 24. Before I go into this one, I do want to announce that when Attorney Kardashian reviewed this, the original title did not include the addition of section 14901. And so we're gonna need for part, we could, she said that we could go ahead and have first reading, but we will need to defer the second reading tomorrow night till after we can re-advertise and bring it back in January. So just want to get that into the record. So this is, this is a really substantive set of changes. So our existing ordinance regarding coastal hazard area and hurricane shelter impact studies, if you recall, you know, if you hit a certain threshold, you're required to do a hurricane impact shelter analysis as part of a development proposal. So the first part of the ordinance is actually tightening that section of the code up, so that's 122.12. I do want to call specific attention to when the planning and zoning board reviewed this, they did recommend approval with some amendments. And under subparagraph A, the previous threshold for triggering a hurricane shelter impact study requirement was 50 units or more. They recommended that it be ten, reducing that to 10 units or more. So that's how it's reflected in the, in the code amendment this evening. The, we, we recommended including the, the shelter analysis shall be performed based on a category three hurricane impact. If you recall in the past, we didn't, we didn't have a bright line as to what standard, you know, what size of a hurricane do we really want to look at when we're trying to determine shelter impacts? So a category three is a major hurricane, so that's, that's what we're recommending be added. We were removing for the data sources to do the study, we removed the third party and pr- data sources, specifically the private industry association reports. We wanted to stick with accepted governmental agencies that deal with, you know, evacuation studies and needs. We also included a new mitigation alternative, which specifies if you're, if the city wishes to accept direct payment as part of a mitigate, is, is a, as a process for mitigation, for shelter mitigation. We provided a standard of how you calculate what that, what that is. And then lastly, on number 14, we included another mitigation alternative of utilizing coastal high hazard area design standards of section 14901. That's the first part of the ordinance. So then the second part, the establishment of sections 149, Coastal Hazard Area Development Regulations, and 14901, the actual design standards, these are completely new. These are largely modeled after the city of St. Petersburg's ordinance. They are the only other city that I'm aware of in Pinellas County that has these, these additional standards for development in the coastal hazard area. So at a high level, any kind of multifamily development or, or townhomes, single-family attached, any project that, of that type, that is also within the coastal high hazard area, at a minimum, has to build to a, to a base flood elevation plus three feet, and they have to build to the next higher wind load standard, according to the Florida Building Code. So that's the minimum. And then as the projects may go up in size, then you may have to include these other more resiliency-based measures or items in the overall plan. So that's kind of the, the high level of what this set of, set of new standards are. We did coordinate this with our floodplain coordinator, as well as our building department, to make sure that we weren't going too far and being too restrictive. I mean, I'm concerned about, you know, does, it could potentially have an impact on, you know, on developers, and we may hear about that. But given what's happened with, you know, earlier this year and, you know, where we, where we sit as a community, we think this is a good inclusion in the code. And again, it is only for multifamily and single-family attached. So I'll stop there, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments concerning this matter? Mr. Jump, are there any public comments by remote access?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay, let's go to the commission for questions. Vice Mayor Lunt. Hi, Renee. I had trouble with this whole section, Ben. Forgive me for not being able to have the time this week. It's been hectic for me to get back to you, but I'll try to be brief. The third whereas, where we mentioned the code updates by the city of St. Petersburg, is, is that really necessary for one of our ordinances?
It, it, it's telling the story of where these came from, and what the origin and what they're based on. So they've been vetted, you know, but no, I mean, it doesn't have to be there.
Yeah, I just, you know, it was just a, I looked at it and went, I don't even know why we're mentioning them. On the fourth whereas, where it says extensive lands located within the CHA that are also, I'm not quite sure why the also is needed there. It just reads simply fine without that.
Okay.
Another note is, and this is probably just personal to me, I needed a better definition of what a cat three impact was. That's my personal failing, probably. Okay, so further on, on page two, we mentioned the most recent U.S. Census or Florida statistical abstract. The U.S. Census is done every 10 years. Is the Florida statistical abstract done more frequently?
That's original language. I think the statistical abstracts generally come out on an annual basis.
So shouldn't we pick the more stringent and the more updated one and just forget about the U.S. Census tract? In my opinion, we should.
It depends on when the census was done. I mean, generally, we want the most up-to-date information across the board. It could be the census, or it could be the statistical abstract.
Well, yeah, hence my question, because if I'm a developer, I'm gonna pick the loosest one ever, and that's probably gonna be the one that's nine years ago, if the census hasn't been done.
It says most recent census or Florida statistical abstract, so I, I, to me, that's inclusive, either whichever one of those is most recent.
Well, it doesn't say that. It says, well, yeah, it does say most recent. You're right. Excuse me. Okay, so in section C, it says the study should provide solutions for mitigation where shelter deficit is projected. And so this is probably a, a personal approach to all this. But from my point of view, there is no mitigation for not having actual physical shelters. Period. If you don't have room to put people, you don't have shelters. If I've paid into something, or, for example, provided onsite space, or provided funds for training volunteers, that doesn't help me if I've got people with nowhere to go. It doesn't help me whatsoever. What am I supposed to tell my people? The shelters are all full, but we paid into raising your road. I mean, that does, that's, that's no help. I just, I just fail to see this, this whole section C is basically saying you can mitigate the fact that you don't have a place for people to go. And I, for one, don't agree with that.
Okay, it's a much larger policy discussion of the board.
Well, that's true, it is.
This is existing language in the land development code that has been in place since the 1990s.
Well, it needs to be revised, because I don't think there's an excuse for not having a place for your citizens to go because some developer has paid into some fund, or educated somebody, or, or gave somebody something. It's just, just not realistic. I mean, I know it's a nice way to let them out, but I don't think they need a door number two, or three, or four, or five. And that's my personal comment, so. You know, and, you know, and things in the land development code that say, I mean, it's been there for a while, but it, it says, you know, direct payment of a shelter mitigation fee to the city of Tarpon Springs. We don't have a shelter in the city of Tarpon Springs anymore. We had one then, but what are we supposed to do with a direct payment now? We don't have a shelter to put it towards.
Coordinate with Pinellas County Emergency Management to get a shelter located in Tarpon Springs.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, this whole thing, from, from my point of view, is, needs a, a total rewrite from, from that perspective. Moving on to the coastal high hazard area development section, I'm assuming where it says new construction of residential dwelling units also applies to residential family, or is it just townhomes and?
This was tying it back to, to ensure that any construction of residential dwelling units, you also have to, you know, you have to, in a coastal hazard area, you must do the mitigation study.
So that's including if I want to build a private home on, in the CHHA?
Subject to the threshold of 10, yes.
Oh, there's a threshold of 10, okay.
There's a threshold for, you know, requiring the, the study for 10. Up, well, the way it's written now is 50 units or more. The planning and zoning board reduced it down to 10.
Ah, okay.
But this section is meant for applicable per, you know, for application, it's really meant to, it, well, it's not meant, it applies to new multifamily construction and single-family attached townhomes
Okay.
in the coastal hazard area. And I did apologize, I put a coastal hazard area map in front of everybody's, at the desk for reference.
The clarification just missed me, I guess. As I said, I didn't have a whole lot of time to go through this, because it's been kind of hectic. When we say, and we refer to under 14901B, where we refer to three feet above the minimum FEMA BFE, or the FEMA 500-year flood elevation, which one is more restrictive, in your opinion?
It, it, there's no, there's no bright line there. That's, actually, that language, the, or the FEMA 500-year flood elevation was actually added by our floodplain management consultant that we work with for things like our coast, our, our, well, for those ordinances and regulations.
Uh huh.
So it, it, there's no, there's no standard as to which may be higher. I honestly don't know the answer to that.
Oh, okay, so I just, I just looked at it and thought that we wanted to make it to whatever would be more restrictive, but.
So the, it's, just so that for folks, the FEMA, FEMA maps do not take into consideration coastal storm surge events. As, but they're really riverine and rainfall type of events. So you, so you do kind of have two different, two different things happening here. So that's why that we picked up the 500-year, 500-year floodplain and, and added that to this, so that we're kind of covering both, both angles.
Now I understand. And then with B, subject, I don't know, one, two to 14, where do these come from? Because these really are not anything that mitigates or protects people from, from building in high flood areas. It just makes things maybe nicer. I, I just don't understand.
They're, they're largely resiliency measures. And again, I, this is, this is based after St. Petersburg's ordinance. So there, you know, the intent there was to, really to address the short term of the physical structures being built and elevated to higher wind loads, but also their long-term sustainability goals of reducing CO2 emissions and redu- and increasing solar and things of that. So it's, it was a two-part.
I agree that they're resiliency methods.
I'm just questioning whether resiliency methods are something that needs to be included in CHHA design standards. Or to, to specifically address, you know, a need, you know, generators for power. I mean, they're this, it's meant to be a list of options as the projects get larger. You have to do more of these options and bring them in, but it's providing the flexibility to the developers to which ones that they want to bring into the project as the projects get larger. So it was a graduated requirement.
Yeah, I, I read through them. I understand what they're for, I'm, I mean. But I just don't understand why resiliency messages or resiliency requirements are listed as such underneath design standards. It didn't make sense to me then, doesn't make sense to me after your explanation. Again, this is, this is a policy that's gonna sit with us for some while, hopefully. I'm not fully convinced that that's the right policy to set. It's like an omnibus bill. It just seems like a place to stick it. I don't know if we have other ordinances that just cover resiliency methods for building.
Not at the moment.
That would be a better place for it. Again, just my comment. And that's, that's all my questions. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Lunt. Commissioner Carr.
Not understanding.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I think the three feet above base flood is the best thing we could do, at minimum. I, I think it's, it makes complete sense. I think it would also help out our rating as a, more of a, I forget what, what Megan does, but what she does with the fire and the, the planning department, or permit department, is gonna go a long way. A couple of things, I just want clarification on section 149. Item B, it talks about solid waste and commercial hazardous waste management facilities, including regional storage, treatment, transfer sites, are prohibited in the CHHA. The current site where the Tarpon Springs dump is, is right in that, slash borderlines it. I know it's, it's yard waste, but then there's also dumpsters and things along those lines, too. And there's also dumpsters for recycling and some other areas as well, too. I'm not sure if that puts the city not in compliance in at that point. I just, it would be nice to understand that a little bit more, and I don't need an answer tonight.
Sure.
And then the other question would be pertaining to the public, the raw sewage plant where they process the reclaimed water. Does that fall in that category as well, too?
No, solid, it's, they're talking about essentially garbage handling. Typically, your, your treatment plants are gonna be low, located at fairly low, low point.
Okay.
Low places in your, in your municipalities.
All right. And then item number E, it talks about new construction of multifamily residential dwelling units. You mentioned something about townhomes, so it, would a duplex fall into, into this category?
No.
Is that a separate, what's that categorized?
Single-family and duplexes, actually, single-family duplex and triplex would not, excuse me, triplex would. Single fa- one and two-family is a separate category, so it would not apply. Triplexes and up would.
Okay. Couple of questions, I, I think the Vice Mayor Lunt actually asked a couple of good questions about the hurricane impact mitigation allowed or not allowed. If the mitigation was just completely wiped out, and then it comes back and says for a category three, Pinellas County is at its capacity until more hurricane shelters are provided, at that point, it doesn't matter what developer comes before us, that they would have no ability to, to propose a project then greater than 10 units. Is that right?
It says the study shall provide solutions for mitigation where a shelter deficit is projected. So these, this laundry list under C are things that the city could accept as mitigation when shelter space is demonstrated, when there's a demonstrated need for shelter space. That's the way the ordinance was originally written.
Okay.
Yes.
So the alternative could be to provide a shelter as one, that's one of the options there?
Sure, they could, they could provide an onsite shelter if it makes sense. You know, generally, I mean, how that would get constructed, and you still have evacuation issues, and you're in a zone that needs to be evacuated, so.
Would you be able to contract, like, with another building, a property owner in the area, to say, would you contract for a hurricane shelter?
Absolutely.
If it's approved by Pinellas County or something like that, okay. Okay, that, that helps me understand that better. And 149 dash 01, I think it's great to have those design standards within the coastal high hazard. It really helps make the projects become a better project overall. And then from a sustainability standpoint, I think it makes a lot of sense as well, too. So I've got no problems with those ones. Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna ask you about 149B two first, number two. I just don't understand how this has any correlation for being in a coastal high area. Install a cool high reflectance roof, I mean, that is.
That's a, that is a long-term resiliency.
But what does it have to do with being at a coastal high area?
This was, again, this was, this is a policy decision of the board. If you do not want to include long-term resiliency measures, then we can, we can take them out. It's, you know, that, that, you're, you're, you're trading off the ability for somebody to be able to actually build, and we get some sort of a long-term benefit out of doing so. The resiliency measures are the long term, as opposed to just the short term, and getting a, you know, a stronger building that's built to a base flood elevation of, of plus three.
My, I am not arguing with you. My question would be, why don't we do that in all of the locations? Why just there? If that's what just doesn't make sense to me.
That's a, okay, that's a broader policy question, again, of, and I think that's something that probably needs to follow on the Sustainability Action Plan when that is, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm staying kind of in my, in my lane here with these. If, that.
You're doing fine.
All right, I'll let you, I'll let you go with that one. It just, honestly, it's something that every building should have, so I mean, I just don't.
I don't disagree.
I don't understand why it's there. But moving on, number eight. You have install no fewer than two operable windows, but yet it doesn't say where they could be placed. So you could put two operable windows in one room, and if there's a flood that you can't get out, or a fire you can't get out, you're kind of stuck. So we're not giving any jurisdiction to where these windows are.
I think the operability of the windows is more of a, when the power goes out, you can open the windows and actually get cross ventilation. I don't know that it was as much related to ingress and egress, although it could serve both purposes. We have separate egress requirements under the Florida Building Code already, so.
So why can't it be stated that it should be on opposite ends of the place for cross ventilation?
I, I have no problem with that. It, it can state that.
Even though I don't know why you'd have to open the windows, since you're providing solar, and you're providing generator.
There may not all be there, so.
You have all these things in here, and then, you know, if all else fails, open the window. Don't worry, I only have three more. So next, I don't understand why they have, again, highly reflective blinds and shades. That, again, has no bearing on being in a coastal high area. But you're gonna give me the same answer, so I'm.
I am, sir.
We're doing this.
B.
What's that? What's that?
So she gave me the same answer.
Yeah, it's just, it just doesn't make sense, but it'll get better. Number 11, now you want to provide for a resilient common area with backup power source to provide air conditioning power, food, water, and emergency supplies, so we don't have to open the window then.
These are all options. They're not required to do every one of these.
I, I think when you put so many things in that are required, you kind of start cha- chasing away people that want to build on this when they go through all of this. I'm just saying.
I just, I just.
It starts getting to the point where it's not worthwhile. That's all.
They're, I just reiterated, these are not required. These kick in when the building project gets to a certain size, and they have to choose from them to do two, or three, or four of these, not all of these.
My number 12 seems to be redundant of number 11. It's just now you have it where you can do it on a different floor, I guess. You know, so if you want to provide resilient common area, now you could do it, provide it for the neighborhood. I don't get that, but. Move on to number 13, because this one's really good. You have utilized mold-resistant building materials in all kitchens and baths, such as fiberglass-faced drywall. Fiberglass-faced drywall is only used in wet environments, in like a bathroom. It's not used throughout the house. So it should say something like greenboard to purpleboard, or something like that. If that's what they're talking about.
Our, our building of folks reviewed this and didn't recommend that we change it. I mean, it does say building materials in all kitchens and baths, such as, it's not, it's a, for example.
So am I to understand that this, you, you just can't put any carpet in there at all?
Not in the kitchen or bath.
No, no, I understand that. And I have seen that before. Okay. That's pretty much all I see. all I see.
Those were in the form of questions and, and not asking for any changes? You just wanted an explanation for them?
Well, I just don't understand why they're there. And they should be clarified before we kind of, you know, vote on it. It's, I think this particular whole section needs a little bit more work to it, but I agree.
Commissioner Cullias.
Renee, regarding the, this plus three item, how, and was this mirrored off of St. Pete as well?
Actually, theirs was plus four. We, when I spoke with our building official about it and the potential, you know, ramifications, we, we agreed that plus three was a, was a better, a better measure to start with at this point, so.
Okay, and does, does that discourage development? Does it encourage just smart, safe development for, you know?
It just, it's, it's, it's not, so instead of being, you know, able to build a project at base flood elevation plus one, now they have to add two more feet of freeboard, if you will. So you're going to be less vulnerable to storm surge and flooding events. You know, in a lot of these, in some cases, you know, the particularly vulnerable areas that are in, also in velocity zones, are going to have to build even higher than that anyway. So it's hitting some of those, those middle ground territories where you're in the, you're in an evac zone, you're in a, you know, a storm surge vulnerable area, you know, popping those up to three, you know, plus three. It's, it's not only protection of residents, there's, they should, ideally, they should still be evacuating, but it's protecting the structure and the contents, you know, in the property for the long haul. So, sorry, did I answer your question?
I want to, basically, would this type of rule discourage development?
Well, discourage?
Or?
I, I, I don't think it's going to discourage development. You know, when you start, you know, they're already doing this in other parts of Florida.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's, this is, you know, the, the additional wind loading is not a, you know, in Miami Dade, it's even higher. So, I mean, developers and builders know, you know, that, that this is not uncommon stuff.
Okay. So, and regarding, we were, how, we had the list under 149.01 subsection B, one through 14. Do we, and I may have overlooked it, do we have numbers where it says if you meet a certain amount of homes, then you're required to reach, or required to have so many options? And at what point do these options become requirements?
So the way it reads, projects containing up to 100 units shall provide, so up to 100 units, you have to provide one of those additional features. Projects containing over 200 shall provide one additional for every additional 50 units. So as a project, so basically, every 50 units, you're going to kick in another one of these. So would you ever, I don't think we would ever hit where you would have to do all of these, no way. I mean, you're probably talking, you know, two or three at the most.
Yeah, okay. Now, do you, when I think of 100-unit projects, to me, it's a big project. Do you think one option is enough? Because I just want to encourage, you know, as we're trying to protect the coastal high hazard, we want to encourage the best smart, you know, quality development as possible. And I think what you're trying to do is, you know, accomplish that. But do you think one requirement of these options, for every 100, and then after 200, every 50 units, we kick in another requirement, that's a good pace? That's a good measuring tool for it?
We don't really have a litmus test on this, so, I mean, you know, if you wanted to be a little more conservative and back those numbers back down, and then we can see the impacts of those down the road and always revisit them, you know, I think it's easier to, to be more restrictive now and lighten up later on if we see it become a problem. So, you know, if you wanted to drop those thresholds down to, you know, projects containing 50 units, or, you know, 100 units, starting at 50, and then working our way up, so you got a little bit lower, lower threshold is a possibility.
Okay. But I would just like to see, you know, just most quality, smart development as we build, you know, as things come across. And if that means having to kick in some of these options with lower amounts of, you know, housing or thresholds, I would be interested in looking into that, because at the end of the day, we don't want, we want developers to have smart development in Tarpon Springs in, in safe ways. And if there's some options here that aren't necessarily reflective of flooding or, you know, in the coastal high hazard, but help to increase, you know, or, and maintain or, or help improve the quality of life of those people shortly after, you know, a disaster or storm, I, I think it would be beneficial. So that's where I'd like to see, maybe the threshold come down a little bit, because we don't know how many 50 or 100-unit projects are coming up. We don't know how much, you know, I don't think we have too much green space left for so many big projects, but maybe that's just something for this board to consider in helping, you know, developers maintain those thresholds with certain requirements. So, thank you.
From a staff aspect, I know, again, we've got so many things going on besides competent, we've got the resiliency and stuff. It seems like there's a lot of question about this resiliency stuff. Is this able to go forward without the resiliency measures? And then we look more as we're doing the resiliency plan and stuff of bringing these back later? Or this, this, what is the disadvantage of giving the commission, the Sustainability Committee, more time, more examination to look at these if there seems to be, you know, some issues with this? I know we tried to put it all in together when we're doing it, but we maybe tried to put too much into this package. Instead of dealing with the issues that we heard the commission wanted to deal with, I think we just threw in another label, we're resiliency, that's early, it's early in the other cities. I think this is the point where most cities are starting, from what I've heard, but it just may be too soon in this process. And would that cause a substantial issue with what we're trying to do, Renee, you think?
So one thing that we could do is just bifurcate this and just remove, so, under 149-01B, after the first sentence, which ends at, in the next higher wind zone risk category of the building code, if you stop there, that's just requiring all multifamily and single family, I mean, excuse me, multifamily and single family attached projects to develop at the plus three and the next higher wind mitigation category under the, under the building code. You can strike everything under that, and we can revisit that at another time, if you like. Or, you know, and that way, you're just, we're just basically looking at base flood elevation and wind, and wind mitigation at the next higher category.
Comment? Is this going to require a second first reading?
It probably would be for good measure.
That's why, that's why we're glad we have Ms. Salzman come join us up here, because...
Mayor, not, not necessarily. However, depends on how many changes that, that you're making.
Well, she's eliminating a whole section.
Well, we still have the section 149-01. It's just from the first sentence in B, everything after that would go away. So the sections are still there. The second one is just greatly reduced.
All right, let's, let's get...
Removing, Mayor, is okay.
Pardon me?
Removing is okay between first and second reading. That's not a problem.
Okay. Hang on, Commissioner Carr, let me ask Commissioner Cullias to finish up.
I'll finish this all up by saying I would like to see a lower threshold in, in being able to get more requirements from that subsection, one through 14.
So you want to keep it forward, okay. I'm ready to table this one.
Well, I want to ask a couple of questions too, but let me go to, before, you're not going to get off that easy, Commissioner Carr, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just want to point out a couple of things, although I know this board wasn't, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it didn't seem like the board was in support of the Anclaw Harbors project, but it was a fight to get a lot of these different resilient things added to the project. And if it's something in the code, and this is a project that's only a partial size of the Anclaw Harbors and this CHHA area, and these are good things that you want to see in the city overall. And it, I mean, these are actually very important things you want to see, and it's a start somewhere at the end of the day. So it, it puts more strengths, or it puts more, I guess you would say, criteria on development in the coastal high hazard area, which I think everybody doesn't want, we really don't want to see heavy density there. So it's going to, it's probably going to prohibit some people from wanting to develop there, which I'm not going to put words again in your mouth, but that's what it seems like you want as a board. And it's a start somewhere. So at the end of the day, I think this is a great thing, that the city's really trying to adapt, and it's our first step overall. And, and to do it in the coastal hazard area makes, I think, a great step in that direction overall. But I would, I would recommend, based on what I've seen, and based on the different things that I've worked with over the past six years as Commissioner and seven years, or four years on the Planning and Zoning Board before that, it's difficult to get the developers to do anything additional. They're going to want to do baseline, no matter what. So they're going to come in and do the, they want a nice project, but they're going to put as few parking spots in there, and they're not going to put any special amenities other than what's sellable to their residents. And so remember when they're, they develop and then they're gone. So whatever you get from a best project, and if it's 100 rooms, just think that there's redevelopment opportunities as well too. You don't want to focus just on land that's open today. You're looking at pieces of land that have businesses there today that can be purchased and combined with other parcels to make a larger project. A lot of that's happening down in Clearwater. So just be aware of that as well too. So you may not see a large tract of land that's available today from raw, virgin land, but then they could buy a bunch of land too. So just something to be aware of. And I think it's, if you want to table it, it's fine, but I think we're missing an opportunity here to add it to our code here that would really be a benefit to our, to our residents in the city.
Hang on, Commissioner Lunt had his light on.
I actually don't want to see a table dial there, because I, I like most of it. What I think is we should bifurcate 149-01 after section B, when it, when it says, starting with "in addition," I think the remaining section of B needs to be thought over. So I would be most, I don't know, willing to, to go forward with this without that particular section after "in addition." C seems to be okay. It's just, I'm struggling with, with the resiliency factors being in there. I really think we need to look at keeping those kind of things in our code, but finding a better place to put them. From my experience, looking at what's going on with resiliency efforts around the country and so forth, a lot of cities are putting in resiliency stuff into their codes and through their building requirements. They're, seem to be leaving them separate, and in some cases, incentivizing developers towards doing that. In other words, if you do this, we will lessen our impact fees, we'll lessen this, or what. It encourages the proper kind of development, rather than giving a laundry list of sticks that a developer is going to try to baseline anyway. So that, that's my thought. I mean, we need to set policy here. If the policy is to improve sustainability on our new developments, I think personally, there's a better way to do it.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner.
I wasn't looking to knock these out. I was asking why it was in a coastal high hazard area.
You know, y'all are a bunch of troublemakers.
So far, I don't have a consensus on where to go with this, so.
Well, just bear witness, Ms. Vincent, it's not you, but go ahead.
I didn't have issues, like I said, with it. It's all good building practice. I just don't understand why you would have it under coastal high hazard areas and not have it across the board. If you want to have no mold or mildew in someone's kitchen and bath, it should be in all buildings, no kitchen and bath. If you think that it's, putting that in is going to stop what happened down at Fort Myers when the water was rushing through the house, I guarantee you, every single one of those walls that are mold and mildew resistant were cut out because it's grown mold between the studs and the walls and all of that stuff. So that's why I just don't understand why it's just put there. This should be something in the permit department for all buildings if you want to just stop humidity of mold and mildew. That's what that's for. It's not something that should be in a coastal high hazard. That's my only point. I'm not disputing what's needed. I'm disputing why we have it there, and that's it. Thank you.
All the lights are off, so I guess it's my turn. Commissioner Cullias, do you have anything else?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to move forward as it's written. Let's get something in there. With the part the Vice Mayor was referring to in subsection B, "in addition," I would like to see some lower threshold numbers. Once we start getting 50, 100 units, these are big projects. And Commissioner Carr did bring up a good point. Multiple properties can be purchased to create some type of land use change if necessary. And I'd like to get this forward, and, you know, we've got some time to come back and, and change things if we think things aren't, you know, if it's not written a certain way. But Mayor, I think I'm going to have you be the tiebreaker in all this, so it's up to you.
No, I, you know, the, I, I think this is good. I think Ms. Vincent needs to be patient with us. And the, this is our first excursion into some new area. And the, the questions I had were not as detailed as what the commission did. But, you know, there's a lot that's changed since the 1990s. And, and we find that in our, our old ordinances, we continue band-aiding them to try and bring them up to speed, which really, we should just start from scratch and redo something. And so that's, that's one kind of thought of going forward and all of this stuff in the future. The other part is, when, as far as modeled after St. Pete, these thresholds as well, are those St. Pete's numbers? I know that plus three is...
Actually, I brought, they, their threshold, their elevation was full, plus four.
No, no, I know that part, but the 100, 200...
I think I actually did back them down from St. Pete's numbers, because it's St. Pete, they're building, you know, high rises. So I did back them down some. I, you know, certainly can look at that again.
Yeah, maybe we should kind of look at the type of project that we, typical project that we would have here in Tarpon Springs. For example, the one that, which I don't think is in the coastal high hazard area, the one that Pioneer Developers did, which was 20 homes, I think. They're right across the street from...
Keep in mind, single-family detached is not, not in the mix here, so.
Right. And then, you know, River Bend and those sort of things are more typical for us. And, and I think the idea of resiliency is good. I think that it's, it's better to have it than not to have it. And I don't know that builders would object that much to it, given the cost of things as they are now. When, when, I was going to ask you, I've got one question I don't want to forget. When we, when we have that list in the coastal hazard, the 14 items or whatever they are, we let the developer pick from that, is that correct?
That, yes.
Okay. You know, the one thing that I would like to see, and I think this kind of hits on a little bit of what you're hearing here, I, I think the idea of having a, a threshold is good, 100, 200, 300. And then they need to do one, two, or three, or whatever. But I think that list also should be taken somewhere as a compendium. And I think the TRC should decide, based on site-specific information, what those items ought to be. I don't know if we could legally do that, but I think the TRC may be better, it might be better in terms of, of understanding our area and what we see as the real needs and problems are in a certain area. And, and, and that could be worked out at the TRC level. That way, the concern I have is that Commissioner Eisner may be fixed on, on mold. Vice Mayor Lunt may be fixed on some power aspect to it. Commissioner Cullia may be interested in something else. And, and we've got a developer telling us what we want, and there's been many times when the commission has said, well, wait a minute, this is what we would prefer you do. And they, they basically say, yeah, we don't have any problem. We just, we're told to pick two, we picked two. But, you know, we just did the, either the cheaper ones or the ones that we thought that might be okay. But if you've got a better idea, we'd like to hear it. That's what I hear from commissioners, from developers. So maybe that would be some thought. And that way, that list that you're talking about could be updated. And that way, that list that you're talking about could be updated by our sustainability committee from time to time, have them review it or something like that. It's just a thought, and that way it kind of eliminates all this confusion, takes a little more clutter out of the ordinance as well. Make it by reference or something like that that's maintained. And then also, I think with it being a list in the ordinance, in order to add, we would have to modify the ordinance, right? I mean, is that correct?
Well, I mean, I think, I'll defer to the attorney, but I think we can, I think, are you asking, can you, I think his statement was, you can strike something out of here, but adding, like, if you want to replace number 7 with something else, no?
No, what I'm getting at, let's say we approve 14 items tonight, as you've got them written.
Oh, I see.
In order, if the sustainability committee or its staff comes up...
It would be in ordinance, yes.
We'd have to amend the ordinance again to add it.
Right.
So I'm not so sure that that's a good idea either, have to do that every time something new might come along for something as minor as that. And then that could open up the can of worms, as you're seeing tonight, with discussions that we've been doing since the 1990s.
Well, and I think, I think C, subparagraph C, gives you some of that latitude, because that's the alternative methods of compliance.
Yeah.
So if there's something out there that's not on the list.
Right. And that would be worked where? At the TRC here?
The TRC, as well as, I mean, they'd have to go through their review, but ultimately, you know, come to the boards for...
I'm just thinking our expertise is with the TRC, not, I mean, I don't want to say anything about our commission, but, you know, our commission is probably a little less...
Hey, 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 we are pretty good here.
I think you got my point. And lastly, St. Pete's okay, but, and I understand, they've, you know, they're, I know from a sustainability perspective, we've kind of done some things that they've done. We've adopted, or at least we've looked at what they're doing. We're doing a lot of the same thing that they're doing, at least with a star framework, I believe, is how we started. But do you know, I know you read a lot, and you seem to be up on things. Is there any city in Florida that's exemplary in this kind of area that you may have run across anywhere?
A lot, when St. Pete was developing their ordinance, they did, they did a lot of background research. What's happening in Florida doesn't jump out. A lot of, some of, actually, the city of Norfolk was a...
Norfolk, Virginia.
It was a, was a highlight. And this, their research is, you know, a few years old now. I can definitely go back and pull, pull what they've, what they've done. Nothing's jumping to my, to my brain. You know, I tend to focus on what's happening in Pinellas County versus, you know, further away, but, I mean, I think...
What I was getting at, you've got an excellent planning department, and, you know, you shouldn't be too shy about jumping out of the 1990 approach and getting into something a little more new age, I guess, if you will, that makes more sense for us. Because a lot of things, we're going to have to depart from the way we've always done things and looked at, look at other alternatives if it's going to make sense. I mean, and then, on the other hand, don't get me wrong, it's not like we're 40% built out, and this is going to have a huge impact on us moving forward. I don't think it will. But there could be these, every coastal high hazard area property that comes forward to us is basically a sensitive property that people get, that piques their interest to see what we're doing in that regard.
And the research and the methodology that St. Pete came up with actually went through the planners advisory committee, it went through Ford Pinellas, it went through several layers of review, because they were using it a little bit differently in that they are actually tying the ability to increase density in the coastal high hazard area, because so much of one of their community redevelopment areas got swept up in. If you, every couple of years, the map gets updated, and it creeps a little farther. And so it was really hindering their redevelopment efforts. So they, they did, they did the work. So, I mean, I, you know, that's why I was comfortable with their, you know, with their legislation, if you will, and where they went with this, but, you know, we can certainly obviously take a deeper dive on it.
Lastly, you know, you made certain references, and you're absolutely accurate. These are policy. You know, this is a policy board. We make policy and things. And I think some of the things that we've gotten into a little bit are non-policy sort of things. And I know that the P and Z board has looked at it, and I think what we're going to wind up doing is sending this back to the P and Z board before the second reading, or should we have to do that? Is that something that we should do if we do a significant change to it? You're not bringing it back until sometimes later?
Until sometime in January at best. I mean, I could certainly take something back through the planning and zoning board. I, I don't...
What would you prefer to do?
I guess, I actually would like the planning and zoning board to see it, because candidly, they were extremely enthusiastic about this ordinance. And so now, if we're going to back it down or change it, I want them to know about it and get their input.
I think that's a good idea. Are you okay with that, or? Speak up before I hold your peace.
Again, and I'm conservative on all the resiliency and sustainability stuff, and, you know, and I think, remembering St. Pete, I think we did back a lot of those down, because when St. Pete does something, you usually have to back it down a little bit, because they're more to the extreme. And you usually, to be smart and see how things work, you usually have to back it down. I think we did most of that. I just hate holding up the rest of this for this section. If we think we can bring that back, if we think we can have time to bring it to the planning and zoning...
We can target for the second reading.
If we're able to pass on first reading, bring it back for that section, and maybe make some tweaks from everything we've heard to come back in a second. I just don't want to give it a second reading, and we've got issues with it that's going to delay it further.
What I'm suggesting is to pass it on the first reading, and then, you know, take a look at your changes, and then you make the call as far as whether you wanted to go back to P and Z. I think Ms. Vincent knows the sensitivity and where the B and Z board's head is these days. And, you know, if, if you make the wrong call, these guys up here are going to hear about it.
Yeah.
So that's all. I'm just saying that y'all need your judgment on that.
I'd like them to hear your input. I'd really like them to hear your input.
All right. So I'm done with my comments. Does anybody have anything else to say? All right. Why don't we have a motion to approve with a second on the first reading, and then if you want to add anything to that, fine, but I think Mrs. Vincent's got a lot of rudder orders already from us tonight that she's going to work on. Would you agree with that?
Sure.
Okay.
I don't know how you want that motion...
Just a motion to approve ordinance...
Twenty-two dash...
Twenty-two dash twenty-four.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022 dash 24.
Second.
No further discussion. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiottis?
Yes. Okay, item D, ordinance 202225, is the conditional uses. Mr. Salsman, if you could read that by title, please.
Ordinance number 202225, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the city of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article 12, Section 209.00 and 209.01, conditional uses and review criteria, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. That is ordinance number 202225, read by title only on first reading. The second reading will be December 13, 2022.
Thank you. City Manager, please.
Renee?
So this is ordinance 202225. This is the first ordinance. This is specific to the land development code, speaking to conditional uses. There's another ordinance later on from the Conference of Plan that talks about the conditional uses related to commercial general and commercial limited. So they're two different ordinances. This particular ordinance, again, is amending the land development code. There were ordinance changes back in 2019 that I've tried to address and essentially roll back, where you, that allowed for conditional use to be separate from a site plan, which is what you saw happening with the hotel project. You were getting a conditional use, but not, you know, the full nuts and bolts site plan. That change was put in in 2019, so basically we're rolling that back. We are adding review criteria and the ability to provide conditions regarding protecting public health, safety, and welfare that was absent from the code as it's written today. And then, starting with subparagraph N, there are changes related to trying to make, trying to get good clarity on what happens when a conditional use that's in operation, was legally established, ceases versus something that's been approved, a conditional use that's approved, and hasn't yet become established, and when those expire. So I'll leave it at that. Hopefully, if you have questions on the language, I can, you know, we can talk through those. I'm really just trying to bring clarity about when you have to do a new application. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any comments by remote access?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Lunt?
First of all, Renee, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for doing this. I do have one question. It's on subsection N, where it says, except where governmental action impedes access to the site. Could you elucidate on that, please?
All right. Basically, that's, if we, if, let's say we have a road project or something that, you know, they can't physically operate a business or something to that effect. Basically, if we've, if we are the, we being the government is the cause for that conditional use that was approved to have stopped operation, that's not, we can't use, that's exempt from that.
Okay, so you're talking about us as the government?
Yes.
Not the federal government or the state government?
Well, I think any government operation would be, that would be any governmental operation.
Okay, so does that include legal stays? If we put a stay on a project, as we've done with ANCO?
I'll defer to the attorney.
Not under that language. I would say no. I wouldn't, the courts would not be considered governmental for those purposes.
All right, thank you. That's what I thought after, but good to know. I think that was my only, oh, on, I'm sorry, on 20901, Standards of Review, Section F, it says, compliance with the adopted level of service standards can be demonstrated if necessary, should, cannot be, should be demonstrated?
2091...
I know, it's a nitpick. It's where the condition, it's where it says a conditional use won't adversely impact or exceed the capacity...
Sure.
...of the city. But then it goes on to say, well, compliance with the adopted level of service standards can be demonstrated if necessary. That doesn't seem to me to...
You know, that's existing language, but I, you know, I don't have a problem with...
It's the first time I've had a chance to review it.
Yeah, I mean, we typically require levels of service to be demonstrated anyway. Well, well, it says if, okay, so...
I know we do, it's just a language thing with me.
So if necessary, so we have thresholds, again, so transportation's a good one. If something doesn't exceed a certain trip threshold based on its use, you're not required to, it's exempt. So I think the if necessary is literally that. If it's required, then we show it. If it's not required, you don't have to show it.
Okay, if the language has worked for us up to now, I'm fine with that. So again, no questions, and thank you for doing this. I know it's a big, been a bone of contention for me for a while.
Commissioner Carr?
Renee, under Section 209, item N, and this would fall into number 1, I believe it is?
Yes.
So this is the area where it talks about there's a conditional use currently in place. If the applicant gets a license, business license reissued, my question would be, what happens if the business decides or forgets to re, like, renew their business license, and it's been expired for multiple years? What happens in that case? Is that considered that they've then abandoned their conditional use? Because then at that point, how can you reissue?
The, I mean, we've typically, you know, if someone just didn't, never received one or let one lapse, if, I mean, if we can show that there are, that they have legally been in operation through other means, you know, I think the intent there is that we would allow them to apply, you know, get their local business tax, as long as they can show that they haven't had a break of more than six months.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there's some understanding in that aspect. That's all I'm trying to understand with that one, too. I've got no further questions.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes, we, and back in that section N, when it comes to, basically, the government's, government actions impede, would that also include, like, a pandemic? Or a natural disaster, hurricane?
A declared natural disaster if the state of Florida issues an emergency, so they do extend things, so that very well could come into play.
Okay. And, I mean, I just want to thank you for rolling back some of these items. I, you know, I believe you put it with its best intention to, you know, just look out for the overall well-being of the city, and I'm willing to support it all. Thank you.
See, I've had conversations with Ms. Vincent on this one. The, you know, I'm satisfied with everything. The public health, safety, welfare, that would allow us to add some provisions or conditions to the conditional use, is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
That's fine. I just want to confirm that. Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. And I don't want to put you on the spot in this one, but, and maybe you could help me out. So what would happen if this is adopted after the second reading, and you have multiple conditional use applications that are out that have been approved already? Where does it fall? Is it current, would the ordinance take place right away, or would there be some type of grandfathering in? I don't know how many are out there, or what that number even looks like. I'm just...
I think the new, new applications would be subject to...
The new applications after the adoption of the ordinance would be subject to it. Pending, so ones that have already been approved, obviously, in essence are grandfathered in prior to the ordinance taking effect.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to understand.
Well, I think if it's an RPD, there's even a stronger argument that that's the case, because the RPD is just, whatever we agreed to is done. I mean, so...
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, okay, so I, if there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to have a motion to approve in a second, please.
Motion to approve ordinance number 202225.
Second.
Okay. Are there any further discussion, comments, or anything?
I'm just so pleased to see this. I want to smile.
You seem happy.
It's also because he's eaten cookies.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiottis?
Yes. Next is item E, ordinance 202226, and this has to do with the mobile food trucks. Mr. Salsman, if you could read the ordinance by title, please.
Ordinance 202226, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the city of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article 4, Section 56.00, temporary uses, and Section 56.05, mobile food dispensing vehicles, temporary, providing for severability, providing for inclusion... food dispensing vehicles, temporary, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. That is ordinance number 2022-26, read by title only on first reading. The second reading will be held December 13th, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Salzman. City Manager, of course.
Yes, I'll turn it over now. I just want to say, this one took a lot of thought, and there's a lot of scenarios involved in it, and I think this is one, when you look at it, I think this is the best place to start. We may have to make adjustments, but believe me, a lot of different, different scenarios and things were put into this one, so as Renee goes into it, just know it took a lot of study, and this may be one that we see how it works, and we may have to come back and do some little tweaks. But I think this accomplishes a lot that some people were concerned about, whether it be citizens having some part. I think this will solve most of the problems that we heard about, and again, we may need to tweak it six months or so down the line, but this is a good start. So, on that and the work we put into it, I'll turn it over to Renee for the product.
All right. We had a few things we were trying to correct with this. So, under 5605, excuse me, subparagraph B, we added the language that refers to what an actual special event is, that that's a separate ordinance. So, we, these things have been, been getting, temporary uses and special events have been getting conflated for years, so we tried to draw a bright line there, just a cleanup. For the areas where we've already allowed mobile food trucks to operate, subject to, you know, our previous regulations, so like out at, you know, Lowe's or up in the industrial district, for the large parcels that have more than one acre of land, we allow additional food trucks to, as a matter of right. So then, the real meat of this, though, is the ability for an individual or a business outside of all the other regulations to apply for a temporary use permit that would be reviewed by the technical review committee, to have a, you know, to have a food truck on the property for some sort of an event, like a birthday, or, you know, I don't know, you know, a wedding, whatever. And so, we've, for businesses, we've essentially carved that out as up to four times per calendar year, 90 days between events, minimum, and the event can be up to two days. So, you can put the food truck out for, you know, a weekend, or a Friday, or Saturday, and then it has to go away, and it shouldn't show up again for at least 90 days. And then for residential property, very similarly constructed, event would be limited to one day, twice per year, and must be separated by at least 30 days. So, that's the high-level overview of, and we put a specific limitation on generators' operation of hours, and so...
Okay. Are there any public comments on this? Mr. Jump, are there any public comments by remote access?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lunt.
Again, I applaud the accommodations. I've been waiting to see this. I have a couple of small questions. Under temporary use in section C, it mentions that temporary structures are not required to comply with district setback requirements. I wasn't quite sure what district meant.
Zoning district.
Okay, that just wasn't apparent to me, so that was just a question on my half. Back to the generator clause, I noticed a conflict. You have 5605, section A, says that the mobile food dispensing vehicles can only operate between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. And yet, you say generators can only rerun from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
That's specific to the temporary one-day or two-day event, not to the previous section.
Well, it looks like the same section to me, but I just thought if...
Those operate on a daily, they can operate on a daily basis under that previous other section, so those hours of operation were what the board agreed to at that point in time when it was adopted. So, that's every day at wherever they're allowed, allowed to operate.
Okay, I just couldn't figure, because if they're allowed to operate from 7:00 to 10:00, I don't know of a food truck out there that can operate without a generator.
But this is, this is a separate, this is a separate section, so, I mean, it's under the same section, but...
It was intended to be a separate.
It's not, it's not, it's not the TR, it's not the temporary use permit section that's specific to the, a one-day or a two-day. So, I have no issues if you want to make it consistent.
I just, yeah, I'd like to take any sort of insane, ugh, that word.
So, we had, so the 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Stuff out of that that's maybe incongruous with whatever. Otherwise than that, I'm perfectly happy with the whole thing. It did cause me to read some other permitting conditions, so I wanted to bring up something, and I'm, little relation to this. We just had a, a city parade where people were throwing candies to the kids on the side of the street, which is interesting, but it's specifically not permitted in our permit conditions. So, it doesn't allow, section 12 dot 512, section 7 says that it's not allowed, and I'm paraphrasing, but, but this is not a big deal to me, but it's either allowed or not allowed, and if we do it ourselves, we should just rewrite the rule to allow it?
I've got that noted.
Not my area.
Call to me, and I have that noted.
Yeah, I mean, that's just a side comment, because I had to dig into some other regulations while checking this out. Anyway, thank you, no further comment.
And to, just to the point of the hours of operation for the generators specifically, I don't want generators in a residential neighborhood going at 7:00. That's why we narrowed that, when they could actually operate as part of that TRC-approved special event, if you will, to...
Yeah, I think that's why we separated.
10 to 9, exactly.
Somebody in a neighborhood and that thing cranking up at 7:00 a.m., I think that's why.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that. I just, wasn't clear to me, and if it's not clear to me, it's not going to be clear to the residents or the...
Sure.
or the vendors either.
So, what you're going to do is leave the times
Yes.
the same, but clarify if, if there's a way of clarifying it, or...
I can try to do that.
Whatever. But, in other words, we're leaving it as you had recommended.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You have more comments? Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. A couple of questions that I would like to ask about is, so in this, it doesn't, it allows for breweries to put a temporary food truck there for up to two days? It's a business, but they can't do it more than 90, they can't do it more than once in 90 days, right?
Yeah, we'd put a separation of event, you know, 90, so four times a year, 90 days between events, so, you've got to go from the beginning of the day of the event, so...
From my standpoint, I think it's important to have the opportunity to have food trucks at a brewery. I don't drink beer, but I like going to breweries and hanging out, and I think it's, it's a nice attraction to go to a brewery. I know people will go to breweries, in my opinion, would go to a brewery more often if there's other alternatives there instead of having to leave. That was one of the discussions that the board had when this was discussed a few years back with the old board. But I think the option for the breweries and the restaurants to have a food truck is an important thing outside of the special approval that's being discussed tonight. I do think 90 days is a little too long as well, too, for a business, so it's once a quarter or so. It would be nice to give some more flexibility. I'm fine with once a month or every 30 days, something along those lines from my standpoint. And then my other question would be, Renee, I don't know these details off the top of my head, is TRC meet monthly? And then, how early do you have to get an application in to meet with TRC, do you know?
It's generally about two weeks.
Okay.
For, I mean, for something like a special, I mean, for something like this, I mean, we can be flexible on when we get them, as long as...
Maybe more like a birthday party, like, is what my thought is.
Yeah, no, we, I mean, we, there's nothing statutory in our code that says when we have to receive applications. It just says they have to be received, reviewed by the technical review committee.
What about the application fee for residential aspect and something along those lines?
The TRC application fee for, I mean, the temporary use across the board, temporary use application fee, whether it's for tents or whatever, is $100.
Okay, it's $100? Okay.
How much?
$100.
$100.
I just think that's a lot. And I understand there needs to be a process. I mean, if we go through, like, a garage sale permit, we go and you could get it pretty much a day of, I think. I almost would say that if you're having it on a personal property, if there's some type of validation you could go through and check, there hasn't been a, an event on this property in the past 30, 45 days. It's not, no longer, no more than one. I mean, compliance is going to be a difficult thing in this situation, I think, at the end of the day, as well, too. How do you, how do you grade it? How do you make sure people are compliant with it? I would say it kind of needs to fall into the same category as the garage sale permit. I think TRC is going a little too far for, like, a personal birthday party at someone's house, if they want to have a food truck parked in their front yard or their driveway. I really think there's, there needs to be a better opportunity here with that. But I do, I do appreciate the opportunity to put special events at businesses or things along those lines. But I would like to see the breweries added, and I think, from the personal standpoint, we need to pull it back a little bit more, not be so restrictive. Although this allows it to go on a personal property, I think TRC is a little much of a requirement. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. I also agree that the TRC is a little much for the, you know, personal property, and I didn't know it was $100. I think it should be something like $25. That's my take on it. I also do agree that it should be at, allowed at breweries. I think, what's that?
Can I clear up a misconception?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, please make that, I think it's important, this is going off on a different tangent, I think.
It's, you have two classifications, residential and non-residential. Non-residential is ever, all the other businesses, breweries, everybody can apply to get a temporary use permit to have a food truck on their property for two days every 90 days.
No, but I don't think it's that.
Not only.
I think if they want to make the change, you're, we're talking about a different aspect.
Okay, and that's...
Going back to the big food truck thing when we did it, the disallowing of breweries in that one, I think we're talking about...
Baby steps.
We're talking about a different, we're talking about a different section to change, not the temporary use. It needs to be changed in the other ordinance of the food truck, not, if a, if a difference plays, you'd have to make that change later.
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
As well as, and I'm going to bring up a touchy subject, I would like to see down the road, having the ability to have some sort of a contract with a food truck to have it at Sunset Beach as well. There's no place unless people bring their own food, so I think they should also be liable for any papers or, you know, debris that goes blowing around, but they have it at Fred Howard Park. I mean, not every kind of food truck, but, and I don't know whether we should make it where it's a three-month deal or just a six-month contract, I don't know. But I would like to see that change as well, so...
And that's another thing we can look at, and I can talk with you individually about the problems we've had in the past. Not to say we can't do it, again, but I can tell you some of the things we have to do. But again, that would be another area to note and, and look at later, because we've, we've batted it back, back and forth, and we remember some of the nightmares that it's caused, and we got enough things, we, we kind of don't, but we, we can bring up that subject again and bring it back and talk about it.
Everything has good and bad, but it's got to be monitored. The other thing I was going to also bring up is, rather than putting restrictions on the time a generator can run, why, you know, there's silent generators that you could be standing right next to and not even know they're on. So, I think that's more of a safety and less disturbance for people than to put timeframe, because I would want to hear it during the allowable hours if it's just going to be a noise maker. I would prefer, you want to say something?
Would combustion generators be more specific to what your...
No.
No?
No, because they make very high-tech, four-stroke, silent generators, and they're all combustible, but it's just, they're the ones that you sound like there's a lawnmower running all day, and they're those that you don't even know they're on. You'd have to be on top of it, so you could put that restriction in, because I don't really think that it should be any time during the day just annoying somebody all day long.
I think just the problem you're going to have is most of these ones around here, the places will be renting or trying to get, don't have those. So, just, that's something to take into consideration.
That's my statement.
Well, and the condition does read, unless otherwise specifically authorized by the technical review committee, so if that instance comes along and they can demonstrate it's, you know, below a certain DB, then perhaps, you know, the TRC can approve that.
Yeah.
You know, when you go along First Friday, most of them have the proper, you know, I think it's $2,000 for a nice unit. If you want to go to Harbor Freight and buy one for $400, $500, it's going to be a noise maker, so...
I understand.
I mean, it's just, that's the bottom line. If you want to utilize it in, in and around area of residence, you buy the proper unit. That's just what I think. It should be done like that, so...
Yeah, but that's not going to happen.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes. Renee, I'm going to ask a couple of examples, but I would agree with Commissioner Carr and Commissioner Eisner regarding private events, or, you know, wanting to have a, a food truck at, for your, your child's birthday, being able to come apply for the city for a permit and, and hopefully get it in a day or two would, would be really convenient, I would think. Hopefully, no one tries to take advantage of it to a point where they're, you know, feeding the general public from, you know, private property, that could be an issue, but we want the convenience of being able to obtain that permit a little bit sooner. I think the TRC application would just delay and maybe cause frustration for someone trying to have an event. Regarding the, will this, for example, they're on private property, a special event comes through, if they apply for a food truck, they're only allowed to have one food truck if it's an acre less?
No, different, different, different sections.
Okay.
So, the acre threshold is, that's, well, we carved out those areas of the city where food trucks can operate on a daily basis, and we put a threshold in that you could have one per parcel, so like at Lowe's or where, you know, what, that, that is different than, when we're talking about the temporary use, you're, you're basically, you can have one.
Okay.
You know, one, one on, for that, that private, you know, event, like the birthday or whatever. So, one food truck per event.
Okay. Now, for, for example, the Epiphany Glendy celebration, if it's happening at Craig Park, they would be allowed to have as many food trucks on the property as potentially they could fit?
Through the special event section of the code.
Okay. Now, if the same celebration were to be held on private property, hence being the, the hall?
Mm-hmm.
Would they still be able to have as...
No, they would be limited to one by the way the, by the way this ordinance is written tonight.
But what they would do is, like they did this time, in, in taking a portion of city street and putting it for a special event, and that's what they're doing
Right.
this time, to put those food, the extra food trucks on that portion of the street, blocked off with, you know, permission. So, right now, they're taking, oh, shoot, I'm forgetting the street I drive on.
Cypress?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're blocking off a portion of that. By using the city street, they have to go through the special event process. By going through the special event process, they can put three, four, five, how many they commit on that property, and that's what, in coming and talking to them, that's how they're handling that and going to be able to do that under special event process.
Okay, and the only reason why I bring that up, because it's the most recent one, but I, but I'm also trying to look for, look out for other events in the community, and, you know, they may be big-scale events on private property. I don't want to necessarily put the city in a spot to have a, give up a piece of, you know, road or property to be able to get around having those type of food, to have more food trucks on a certain piece in it. I would hopefully, whether that goes through the TRC or a special events like any other event that we'd see, I'd, I'd like to have that maybe come before us. Now, the, I would also like to see instead of two days, three days. Because Thursday, Friday, Saturday's a nice, you know, three-day weekend, things get, you know, can get going, or like, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday for temporary use, and I think ninety days is a little bit too far out, but I'm willing to give it a shot right now just to get the bulb rolling in the right direction. And if there's a, a strip mall, for example, and there's five stores on there, five different businesses, could they all technically, each one of them apply for a special permit or to have the temporary truck on that property one weekend, then the next weekend it would be a different business from the same strip mall that would apply for a food truck? That's just one, you know, slope that crossed my mind that we could run into a scenario.
Right now, it's written as property slash parcel, so if there's multiple parcels in there, I think that's open to debate as to how we would interpret that.
Okay, I, I just don't wanna, I don't want any big private property be able to just stack as many trucks as they want through there, but I would like for them to have the opportunity to apply for a special permit to for any special event, to have more than one truck on a property of a private event. So those are, those are just my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that, I mean, if you kind of explored a lot, even strip malls, there are stores or not, some, they may be individually owned, but they don't own the parking, and that the parking is commonly owned. And so the, like a, the condominium association, if you wanna have a food truck, if, if unit one-ten wants to have a food truck because of a party they're having in their unit, they're probably gonna have to get the homeowners association to apply for it, because they don't own the parking lot, the homeowners association has. So this is what I think our staff kind of does and thinks things through, and, and then, of course, nothing is, it's not a perfect world.
Of course.
If Ms. Vincent and the staff can't handle it, then this gentleman sitting next to me does. And then if he can't handle it, we hear about it.
Okay.
And that's the way it works, and usually after some hand wringing and stuff, something usually works out. So I, I, I'm okay with, with, with what we're proposing right now with the one, but let me, before I get started, let me go to Commissioner Carr again.
Yeah, my question was to Mark or Renee, is there, what are their opportunities or options? Would there be other than a TRC review for residential permit?
We, we, so let me, even though it's a TRC review, we don't have to operate that as a a sit-down, come-to-a-TRC-meeting review. We, we can do what we call like a desktop review. So we get it, we send it out to the TRC members, we collect any comments, and then we can, we can administer them, them that way, so that you're not having to wait a month to get a permit.
Can that be clarified? I think that makes more sense.
I think it's done that way anyway. Building permits are the same way.
Yeah, we do that. I mean, so you're, you know, you, you're, sometimes you're required to have, you know, for a tent, a tent permit, or for, you know, and many, many times, you know, these things come in at last minute.
Most of them are tents. That's what most of them are.
So we route them and make sure the appropriate people review them, you know, police, everybody, and then, you know, we make sure there's no issues, and we can go ahead and.
And we can process those like this.
Okay. And then the other, the other facet, can we adopt a fee in this, the way it's written, proposed? Can we adopt a fee in this?
So this is all under the temporary use section of the ordinance, and in the fee section of the ordinance, temporary uses forever and a day have been a hundred dollars, so that's what we've charged. You know, if you want to carve out a separate fee within this, or an exemption for the fee for residential, or?
Yeah, I'd like to see an exemption.
I'll defer to the attorney sitting next to you.
I'm just trying to, I'm just thinking about the mobile vending law change to make sure that we abide by that. I've had to litigate that issue recently, so we'd have to look at that to make sure.
So in this instance, it's not the mobile food vendor that's having to get, pay the fee, it's the property owner that's paying the fee.
That should be okay.
Right.
As long as they don't pass it on for an reason.
Exactly, exactly. So, I, I mean, I think, you know, then, that's up to, again, I think that's a discussion.
What is the best, if we're gonna set a twenty, for these type of ones, a twenty-five dollar fee, what would be the best way for us to do that?
The, the property owner getting the temporary use permit.
But just put it in, put it in here, or do some?
No, put it, no, put it in the other section, yeah.
Okay.
So we're gonna have to amend the other ordinance?
There should be a gen, well, I don't know if you do it annually, but.
We do.
Okay, yeah. So you could do it at that time.
Thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Did we end the conversation on the breweries?
We did.
Yeah, that, that's a difference.
A different.
No, 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 I'm just asking, we're not gonna do anything with breweries as part of this, right?
That'd be a whole nother bring back.
Yeah, I understand, 'cause tonight is not the night to do that. I mean,
Problem at a time.
Most of these places don't have private property that they can put the food truck on, and that was always the issue, so, and it makes that, you know, you're, you're creating a class there. Ms. Vincent and I already talked about it. Have you given any more thought to that four times, ninety days, no sooner than ninety days?
You know, we, we just kinda, kinda did the quarterly approach, you know, four, four times a year. If you wanted to provide flexibility, I mean, we could, you know.
No, no, I'm just asking, I mean, did you and the city manager talk about it all, at all, or?
We, we didn't. I think, you know, it, the, the question was if it's.
We did, we just wanted the frequency of some house doing it four times in a, in a month.
Well, it's the ninety days, Ms. Vincent and I did a little math.
And then to separate, as long as, you know, now you, your quarter may be separated by, you know, fifteen days or three days, if you, well, this quarter and this quarter, I mean, that way it gives you a little more flexibility about the four times per year, or you could just say four times per year.
Yeah, ninety, ninety days, times four is three sixty, three sixty-five a year, and if you do it ninety days, then ninety days, then ninety days, it's like you lock yourself into any subsequent events based on the ninety days, and I mean, there might be a, why don't you think about that a little bit? We're not gonna solve that tonight.
I think we're worried about just the continuous impact of somebody wanting to do consecutive ones. You know, the noise of a birthday party in neighborhoods, all right, maybe for one weekend to put up, but then if you use four consecutive weekends, maybe it's bringing that ninety-day in-between down, maybe bringing it down to sixty days.
Well, I was saying four times a year, sixty days apart.
Yeah, that would solve it, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we talked about.
Now, the residential we have is thirty right now. Do you wanna keep that at thirty, or do you wanna just go sixty all around with this? Business and residential.
Either, either way, we'll work on that.
All right, so sixty days.
Okay, yeah, we'll bring back that.
So is that pretty much it on this, or?
I'd like to see.
Commissioner Carr, you got a little smile on your face. Anything else?
I mean, I, from the business side, I still think sixty days, I think it's more flexibility where there. I'm good with thirty days in the, in the neighborhood. But I would even, I'm for bringing the sixty day down even further.
Okay. That'll give the staff a little more guidance when you just said that, so.
I'd like to see four times a year, thirty days apart, because there may be certain seasons of the year where the food truck's not gonna be utilized on certain, you know, so. I think that helps give the ability for certain seasons and some consistency in between those thirty days.
I, I also don't see, you know, you could make it four times for non-residential, two times residential, whatever, but I don't understand why it has to be ninety days apart.
Do you like the four? Do you like what the commissioner said? I'm trying to get a consensus or anything.
Yes, I, I just think it, you know, it's, it should be four times.
Four times, thirty days apart.
Whatever, what, what I'm getting at is I, I think it, the ninety days is, I think everybody agrees it's a little too rigid, and I think the city manager was just trying to keep a nuisance from happening, and so thirty days is fine, sixty, it's whatever. If y'all want thirty, I don't have any issue with that. I hear three people saying thirty days, right? Commissioner Carr, you were on thirty days?
Fine.
So there you go, thirty days, okay?
Easy peasy.
I'm fine, I still think we're.
And then, go ahead.
We're legislating in a vacuum here. Regardless of what you or I or whatever else thinks, the applications are gonna come in from businesses that wanna do this. Has anybody here got an idea of what the businesses might want? Is it suitable for them to be thirty or sixty, or do we care?
Well, it's better than not being able to do it at all.
Well, that's true. I mean, I concur with that.
And the only reason we're here is because this gentleman that got up had like a anniversary of his business, and he couldn't get a food truck on it.
We, we've listened to all the business, that's why we came with this, the best thing right now to appease everything we've heard. Now, that's why maybe in six months, for the businesses, we made the changes, so.
Fine with me. Like I said, I'm super glad that this is there, 'cause I never liked it.
I think the idea, don't get me wrong, I, I, I think what we did was we restricted them.
Too much.
Way too much. And now we're just losing it a little bit. We're gonna learn a little bit from it. If we get complaints from it, then we can, you know, we, we can, the staff will figure out what to do and maybe come back with another.
And we'll, we'll talk to Mr. Salzman about the fee, how we can get the fee fa, you know, what's the fastest way to get it when this goes in, if you want that fee to be lower than normal, people are doing ten, a different thing. We'll try to work on our best mechanism. It might take it a little longer, 'cause we'll have to do two, January, but we'll work on that other aspect, too.
And, and then the TRC is really necessary in order to keep track on the frequency of the events, I guess is what's.
But we've told you the fast, we, we can do it the fast-track method and still keep the same integrity of the process and still get, get it out of, we'll, we'll hope people give us at least a couple of weeks' notice. But we have the ability to fast-track if we need to, and we, we've done that on tents, we've done that on other ones, and just processed it through or called people, just called a special one together to get it done. So we, we get it done for them.
As long as they don't have to wait for a TRC meeting, that, that was.
No, we, we, you haven't heard a complaint, I don't think, about the ones wanting a tents or anything, 'cause we've done it through by that process that she said. That's why you haven't heard the complaints.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Anything else? All right, we need a motion and a second, and were a couple of changes that we made with regard to the timing on this thing, and also you could work in there that the city manager will look at the mechanism for reducing the fee and bring that back to us as soon as feasible.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six. And you want any conditions on it?
Adjustments.
The conditions, as we've spoken, you're gonna bring it back to us?
Second reading, yes.
In a second reading.
So that was thirty days on the fee.
Yep.
And the TRC shortened, just to, okay.
Four times a year is same, that's the thirty days, the only change, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, from a discussion standpoint, I, I know it's a separate section, five oh nine point one oh two, breweries, public parks, other things that are just permitted areas. I do think it's important to bring that back before the board and have a further discussion about that.
Parks?
Uh, if it's park, public parks, if it's breweries or something along those lines, or, or actual restaurant, I think it's important to discuss that a little bit further. Understanding is that it's a separate code, I think it's five oh nine point one oh two is what it looks like, and the city manager said that, I think it's,
Yeah, I can pray that.
It seems like there's a willingness to have some further discussion.
Again, there's some things, it, it's not gonna be, yeah, we'll do that, but we have to look at things about their capability of par, there's a lot of things, criteria we're gonna have to work on, but we will, we will commit tonight to bring that portion, but to look at it, look at all the frame of it, look at the things, and bring back one specific to that in the future, bring that back in the future.
Through the P and Z first, right?
Yes, P and Z, and go through the whole process and, and go through it and bring it back.
Is that okay with everyone? All right?
I don't know if I seconded it. Was there a second? You seconded, right?
No, we're good. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticar.
Yes. Okay. This Book, Dr. Buchavales, you're next. All right, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, application concerning a smart code amendment, the hotel height. Mr. Salzman, if you could read the ordinance by title, please.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending appendix B of the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, a transit-based infill code for the SpongeDocks and Community Redevelopment Area. By amending tables five B, I think that's one, or is it I? I can't.
One.
Through five B twelve, specific transit zone height standards for, and section, four point five point two, accessory unit maximum area providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That's ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, read by title only on first reading. Second reading is December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Salzman. City manager, of course.
He waved over to me.
Never mind, Ms. Vincent.
So, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, this largely is about reconciling the hotel heights that were called out in the special area plan, which is really kinda like the mini comp plan for the community redevelopment area in SpongeDocks, and the actual smart code. So if you recall, we had a bit of a circular reference where one referred to the other, and with no clear distinction over what ruled the day. So what we have done is updated all of the tables, and essentially, anywhere where the special area plan calls out a specific height allowance or recommendation for hotel heights that exceeds what those character districts would allow, we basically have specified that that has to be done by conditional use. So there's nothing arbitrary, it needs to come through the board, planning is only board and board of commissioners to get approved for anything above the district height that's already called out for a hotel. The other piece of this is we have an inconsistency for accessory dwelling units between the smart code and the reg, and the land development code, and so we are just reconciling that and increasing the allowable square footage for an accessory unit from five hundred to six hundred square feet within the smart code, and that keeps it consistent with the other wa, the land development code. So I'll stop there and answer any questions that you might have.
Before we go to public comments, just for calibrating everybody, let's roll back to the SpongeDocks Hotel that we just had recently. We had the special area plans, the SpongeDocks special area plan overlapped transect five C and transect four A, I believe, right? But within that special area plan, the, the transect five C, which is the SpongeDocks, was a hotel by right of five to seven stories at that time, is that correct?
It was up to five stories.
Up to five stories. And then the only reason it was a conditional use was because of the transect five.
Correct.
Five C, okay.
Well, the hotel was actually a conditional use itself.
Right.
So, so what we're specifying is that across the board, anything above the district height allowance
So that, that, this ordinance kinda fixes all of that?
It does.
Okay.
I hope we got them all.
Let's go to public comment, Dr. Buchavales.
Tina Buchavales, one one five Athens Street, and can you just clarify, it was only up to five stories on that?
Correct.
Only up, okay, it's not four to six?
Anything above, in the SpongeDocks, anything that's gonna be above three stories is gonna, would, for a hotel, would require a conditional use.
The one was by right, five stories.
It was up to five, it was, yes, ma'am.
By right?
By right.
Okay.
Not conditional use.
Okay, by conditional, I thought, I thought by right was different than conditional use.
It, it was by right.
By, in other words, the only reason that the ho, I'm just, I'm taking a little latitude to explain.
Yeah.
The only reason why there was, I'll let you explain it, go ahead, that's.
So, so the, the hotel project sat on a, an assembly of parcels, only, part of it was a hotel at five stories would have been permitted by right. The other portion of it was on a parcel where the hotel was a conditional use. And so it was because of the conditional use review that we were pulling in, that, that, you know, it became a compatibility type of review. So what these changes will do is basically, not just in the SpongeDocks, but anywhere within that special area plan where this additional hotel height is called out in the character district, it becomes a conditional use to, to obtain that height. It's not by right anywhere anymore.
And so by right is only what?
Three stories in the SpongeDocks.
Three stories at this point?
Three stories.
Okay. Good to know. Because I was going to say, I'm a little bit at a disadvantage because as I was trying to prepare for tonight, there wasn't really an active link, you know, to what this was about and what it was going to say. And I know you had to reconcile what you were actually talking about. But I would like to say, um, at this point, you seem to have an opportunity with this ordinance to either go with it, with some of these things as they are, or to take some other things into consideration. And one thing I would like you to take into consideration is that we have, uh, the RFP is out now for the Greek Town, uh, Vision Plan to come out. And that is going to be followed by guidelines for the district, um, which hopefully will also put certain conditions on the district. We saw when we went through, um, all of that stuff with the hotel for months and months and months, which hopefully we never have to go through again, if this can, if these ordinances can help resolve that, um, that some things, some heights may be incongruent with the historic building structures of the historic area. And I find it very unlikely that when it comes to making guidelines for the district, that they're going to want to go up to, let's say, four to six stories or anything, you know, or much above three stories. Uh, so I would like you to consider the possibility of putting in there somewhere, you know, that, that all of these things might be somehow have to also take into consideration what the guidelines are specifically for the historic districts. I think that's one way, one easy way to resolve things rather than just say it can only be this much in, in the SpongeDocks area, but to go by what is, uh, what is recommended for those particular historic districts. Um, and let's see. Any, anyway, so hopefully you will have, you can have the opportunity to do that within this, uh, uh, within reviewing this ordinance then, yes.
You're talking about at a later date. Once the character district or the historic district is established, is that correct? I mean, adopted, it's established now on the National Register, but in terms of adopted formally through ordinance, is that?
That, that, yes. It looks like probably within six months, there will be guidelines ready, hopefully, for your review and adoption. So, and what I'm saying is, you may not want to adopt an ordinance now, you know, or amend an ordinance now, that just may have to, you know, might be changed or you might want to change six months out.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, if there aren't any other people present, um, Mr. Jump, is there any comments from remote access? Actually, Ms. Marcus is here.
We do not have anyone in ten- in attendance at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to commission comments, Vice Mayor Lund.
Um, I'm actually happy to see this. I had a little difficulty in the fact that when we got to the, the extra transit code outlines and stuff like that, everything kept referring to, you know, a special area plan that wasn't included with the backup. So that was kind of a loss. It meant extra work, which was okay, except there's like twelve of these. So if, if I'm to understand correctly, in most instances, the conditional use is going to be four to six floors for a hotel.
Um, it could be, the conditional use could actually, in certain districts, could be even less than that. Um, and I, I don't have it memorized, the, the discrepancies between.
I didn't have a chance to go through all of them.
Yeah, so, you know, yes. I mean, generally speaking, that's, you know, the hotel height allowances were anywhere from, you know, three, I think there is actually one district where it goes up to six on the South Pinellas Gateway. But again, all of those would be by conditional use.
Okay, so conditional use puts it back into our.
Yes.
Wheelhouse.
Yes, sir.
Right, rather than, is there any, um, transics left that are by right? As far as four to six floors by right for a hotel or more?
No.
For all conditional use now?
No. The, the, for hotels above, anything above the, the straight district height that everything else has to comport to.
District height is usually three stories.
Would require conditional use review.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for doing this. Commissioner Carr?
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Hey, can you, um, help clarify for me, covered parking, is that considered a floor?
Covered parking is considered a floor.
Okay.
Or a story, yes.
Okay. Up to fourteen feet max is what it looked like on most of them?
Yes.
Um, so it's three stories unless it's conditional use and that would come before the board and then it could be valuable to that point if it fits the neighborhood or if it's a.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So if something was to look at, for instance, Pinellas Avenue and Doda Canice, you're on a highway there. Some taller buildings are in the area. That could be viewed at a little bit different than obviously down the west end of the SpongeDocks.
Sure. It's, your, your compatibility review is going to be situational to where it is.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in the smart code, transit code, um, there's a little couple of words there that I know, I don't know if we've dealt with, um, that adds to the confusion. Um, so you have T three being one to two story with some three story. You have T four, that's two to three story with a few taller. That makes it very vague on, on comments. Um, and then you go into the T five, which is two to five stories, so it's redundant to the two to three stories. Um, is there anything we can do with that? Because then you have T six, which is four stories, uh, with a few shorter buildings.
So you're looking at, I think, one of that, like that generalized table of T one, two, three, four? Yeah, and that's really, that's a, that is a standard smart code reference document and it does mean to reflect the ranges. It's not, you know, the, the detail, it, it's in the detail of each of these cut sheets where you get your specifics of, but in a general smart code, it's a standard code, if you will, and those are the, you know, the recommended ranges in those districts, um, or those T zones. And we have gradations within those T zones. So I wouldn't put too much stock in that, um, you know, because it's, it's, it's the more general, the more specific is what we have to go to for our actual regulations. Did that help?
Yes, because I did look at each one of them and each one of them had that red highlight of conditional use on each one. Um, so that gives us that flexibility, is what you're saying?
For hotels, correct, yes.
So I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
It's just this particular thing, I would like to see at some point cleared up. It doesn't have to be today. It's just, when you have things like this, it causes confusion. Um, I'd rather it be more definitive, whether it be wording of one to two story, you know, three to four story, four to five, however it's to be, so that we just don't have, uh, where people could misconstrue what, what our code is written.
Understand.
That's all. That's my only comment. Otherwise, I'm going to, I'm happy that we're dealing with this.
Okay. Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes. So Renee, any potential hotels above three stories must be condition- must be reviewed conditional use?
No, it's all.
They're, I'm thinking there may be one instance where four in one specific district. I'll have these memorized. Um, let's see.
And it's not Riverside, just talking about that, that district.
T five has got five stories. That's fine.
The one district where it's the T four B residential plus industrial, under the building height for principal building, it says three to four stories max. Um, that's another one that we might want to look at. Um, but then it has the footnotes. It says, okay, I'm sorry, it says three stories max by right and four stories by conditional use. So in that particular district, three is your base. Anything that wants to go four, rather than hard to hotel or not, has to come to the board for a conditional use. So there are a lot of little nitpicky nuances in these things.
And Commissioner Carr did elaborate that there could be a property on, you know, the, the Vicanees or, you know, Pinellas Ave where.
Sure.
Could be higher than three stories would come for a conditional use in front of the board. Uh, I, I think it's important to get this stuff in place now because who knows what can happen in six months? And, um, we, we can always modify if needed, but I think it's, you know, this is a great direction for, for what the residents want, for what we've been guided by them to do and, uh, just hope there's a good board up here making those tough decisions on conditional uses. Thank you.
Yeah, I, um, I agree with Dr. Bukavales, but I think for tonight, I'd like to pass this or at least get it in place to get rid of the five stories, at least for the issue that we had down at the, uh, the SpongeDocks. Um, that's all I have. Is there any other?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticaris?
Yes. Okay. Uh, item G, uh, comprehensive plan text amendment concerning the future land. It's ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three. Mr. Salzman, if you could read that by, uh, title, please.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two, uh, thirty-three, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending objective two point four, policy two point four point two, policy two point four point three, and section six definitions of the future land use element of the comprehensive plan, providing for other modifications that may arise from review of this ordinance at the public hearing and/or with other responsible parties, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. That is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three, read by title only on first reading. The second reading will be held on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Renee?
Um, and for the record, uh, second reading on this ordinance and the next ordinance, since these are, uh, comprehensive plan amendments, those still have to go to the state and come back. So it will probably be the beginning of February. So we'll just have to re-advertise these because we're kind of outside that sixty-day certain window at this point. So, um, just, uh, wanted everyone to know that. So, all right, so the first, uh, this ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three, this is the second ordinance regarding conditional uses, um, that I alluded to earlier this evening. Uh, this is specifically, uh, amending the commercial general and the commercial limited future land use map categories. And what this essentially does, this is where we had the, written into the comprehensive plan, the ability to apply for a conditional use for residential development up to fifteen units to the acre. So, um, and that, just a little history of why it was written this, the way that it is. When the countywide, countywide plan rules were first drafted, this is the way that the commercial general and the commercial limited future land use categories were, were written. And pretty much everybody, you know, had the same land use map categories in all the municipalities. Um, over time, those, that has been amended and they've done away with this primary and secondary use, um, uh, where you can have a, you know, secondary uses like residential and things of that nature. And they've gone to what we have now are threat, are acreage thresholds. So what I have done is I've updated the ordinance to basically remove resident, the conditional use reference altogether, so there's no conditional use anymore. And then, and in place of it, essentially put a acreage threshold for residential development in both of these districts. So if, let's say it's a twenty acre parcel of land that's zoned, or has land use of commercial general, you could only put residential on up to five acres of that, of that property. Beyond that, you would have to apply for a map, a land use map amendment to something that would support to a residential medium or something to that nature. So that's the way it's structured in the countywide plan rules now. That's what I'm proposing to, for, uh, these two, these amendments to the commercial general and the commercial limited. When we do the overall update to the comprehensive plan that we're working on, we'll probably apply those same cut types of standards through the rest of the categories. But for now, I'm focusing on the, the two, the two that were of, of issue, um, immediately. So with that, I'll stop and I'll, um, I'll answer questions on this.
Ms. Vincent, again, for clarification, was the conditional use part of the original, that, that provision was part of the original countywide?
I don't know if that, I, I, yeah, let me clarify that. I don't know that conditional use was actually part of the countywide plan rules, but it was in our, in ours going back to the nineties.
Right.
Yes.
And that, that's another figment of.
Yes.
Something that we need to kind of get these things out of there if they're.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Vice Mayor Lund?
Um.
Uh, hang on. Uh, public comments?
Comments.
Everybody's gone. Mr. Jump, uh, are there any remote access comments?
There is no one in attendance at this time. They trust us.
All right. Vice Mayor Lund?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The next best thing we could do is stop allowing density migration from wetlands. I hate that. But thank you. No, I think so.
Okay, Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Renee, I've got a question. It's, uh, objective three point three, policy three point three two. Um, I don't know what page it is. Page forty-three of the document.
That's, I think that's the next ordinance.
Is it?
Yeah.
Can I skip it? Okay.
Yeah. We're on objectives two point four, policies two point four two and two point four three.
We'll save that one.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three.
All right, just give me a second here. Oh, I've got no questions about this one. Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, no questions, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
No questions.
Commissioner Cuyas?
I just wanted to ask, Renee, as we talked about, you said, uh, these two items required immediate attention and, um, there are some certain items or, or, you know, amendments that, that could require that attention sometime in the future. When do you think we should address those?
Those will be, I will pick that up with the overall comprehensive plan update. We'll, we'll be restructuring all the future land use map categories to bring them a little more in, into, into line with how the countywide plan map structures the categories for their uses and thresholds and things of that nature.
Okay, was that somewhere around like April, I believe, or?
It's probably going to be a little later than that. But, but we're, we're underway with, with those reviews now with our consultant. And so in, you know, early next year, we should be getting back in front of the board with something tangible where we are with that.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm good. I'm okay. So having said that, is there a motion and a second?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three.
A second.
Okay. Uh, without, if there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticaris?
Yes. Okay. Item H, um, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two, comprehensive plan text amendment, future land use and coastal element. Mr. Salzman, if you could read that by title, please.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending coastal high hazard area policies of the future land use element and coastal management element of the city of Tarpon Springs comprehensive plan, providing for other modifications that may arise from review of this ordinance at the public hearing and/or with other responsible parties, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. That's ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two, read by title only on first reading. Second reading is unknown.
Thank you, Mr. Salzman. Um, vice, or Mr. LeCours?
Yes, Renee, can you present this, please?
So, all right, so this ordinance is specifically focusing on the coastal high hazard area policies of the comprehensive plan. So again, this kind of matches up with what we were discussing with the land development code. So the first major change under policy three point three point one, the objective there is limiting coastal planning area population densities the objective there is limiting coastal planning area population densities to what can be safely sheltered or evacuated. This policy originally only applies to, applied to future land use map amendments and increasing density by a future land use map amendment in the coastal hazard area. I've expanded that language now to where it reads, it says, "The city shall deny future land use map amendments, zoning map amendments, including planned developments or conditional use proposals which would result in an increase in residential density." You know, and then the rest of the, of that whole section stays the same. So it expands the authority to, to, you know, and the, and the review to not just be limited to future land use map amendments. Under Policy 3.3.2, this is kind of clarifying language and then adding a condition, a number four to this. And this, this policy speaks to specifically within the community redevelopment area, how we deal with coastal development and density in the coastal high hazard area. So this particular policy should have been updated when the previous policy was adopted, when all these, these balancing criteria that were put in under Policy 3.3.1. So trying to make this policy now kind of match up to what took place then. So within, again, specifically within the community redevelopment area, you can potentially increase density for mixed-use projects with residential above-ground floor only. And then you have the criteria to review. And then we added the four, which is the reference to the coastal hazard area design standards. So again, if that's something that we don't think is baked enough, we may want to revisit that as, you know, along with that, that policy. But again, trying to show that within the, within the community redevelopment area, that designated area, allowing for projects to at least develop, to, to consider using that coastal hazard area design standards as a mitigation option. Under the actual coastal management element, Goal 3, and then Policy 3.1.2, this is, this policy is about restricting the use of public investment in such as roads, water, sewer, and infrastructure that would subsidize new private development. We've expanded that to be very clear that even if the developer pays for that construction, if we're inheriting it, that that's not, that's not acceptable use because we're having, inheriting long-term maintenance and expenditure of public dollars. So we wanted that to be crystal clear. And then under Objective 3.4, where again, we're directing population concentrations away from known or predicted coastal hazard areas, Policy 3.4.1, again, trying to provide some clarifying language about what we're evaluating, what we're looking at, a potential shelter deficit. So it expands the language and says, "We restrict the infill of vacant parcels in the coastal hazard area to five dwelling units per acre where a shelter deficit is demonstrated." And then we add the language, "For a Category 3 or higher hurricane, in lieu of this limitation, the city may allow development up to the current maximum allowed by the existing future land use map designation of the parcel subject to hurricane shelter impact mitigation and coastal hazard area design standards." So again, this is really kind of recognizing existing density on the future land use map and a path to go forward, at least for consideration. So this may be more than y'all want to discuss tonight, but
All righty.
I'll stop there.
Mr. Jupp, are there any public comments by remote access?
We have no one in attendance at this time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lund?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Carr?
Can you touch one more time on the striking the prohibiting future land use density increases? That's another 3.3.
Oh, 3.3.2, okay. So prior to 2000, I want to say 18, 19, the section above, the Policy 3.3.1 did not exist. That was added. That whole policy was added.
Okay.
And in doing so, it made 3.3.2 a little bit out of, out of uncoordinated. So Policy 3.3.2 used to basically say, "The city shall prohibit future land use density increases within the coastal hazard area." Period. That was the policy. And then the next sentence, "Within the community redevelopment area or an area designated with an approved special area plan, a density increase for residential above-ground floor may be considered, subject to meeting..." So that was the entire policy. And so when they put in 3.3.1, it made 3.1, that first sentence of 3.3.2 out of step because really, it's this, this policy 3.3.1 kind of replaced that. It didn't, it was no longer an absolute prohibition on increasing density. You could at least consider it, subject to all of those criteria. So that's what was put in place in 2018. So what I'm trying to do is clean up that and then, and then also expanding that to include zoning map, conditional uses and everything else. So trying to square these two sections together.
Does it allow for, does it allow for density increases in still, in 3.1.1?
Subject to, it, it says that the city may, at their sole discretion, consider approving such amendments based upon a balancing of the following criteria as are determined to be applicable and significant to the subject amendment. And then you have A through H. That language is straight out of the countywide plan rules. It's identical. And that's the same criteria that they use too. If you're looking at the, at the higher level countywide plan map, that's the same criteria that they use when considering an increase in density in the coastal high hazard area.
Is it an easy process?
No.
Okay. I would say with the determination of that, the, there's a significant amount of hoops to jump through. I understand this now. With the 3.3.1 policy. So, thank you.
You're done?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. 3.1.2. The word restrict means nothing can be done? It's under Goal 3, Objective 3.1, and then it's Policy 3.1.2.
Okay, you're in the coastal management element, I got it. 3 point, okay, 3.1.2.
So it says, "Restrict public investments such as roads, water, sewer, infrastructure, which would subsidize new private development in coastal high hazard areas." So are they saying in coastal high hazard areas, you cannot put sewer pipes, water pipes? Or are they liable for them the rest of the time that that building or structure is there? Because it clearly states, "We're not going to be doing it."
And, and that was the, that was the, that was the question mark I was trying to bring closure to. So we clearly have a policy that says, "Restrict public investment in the coastal hazard area," you know, with those things. Now, it, we can't 100% do that. We have a lot of infrastructure that's in the coastal hazard area now that we can't just ignore. So, you know, so, but new investment into those areas was all, is still a question mark as to what, you know, it says restricted, so we shouldn't be doing that with city dollars. The, the problem I was having is, okay, what if a developer is very willing to build a brand-new development and they want to, but it requires public water and sewer infrastructure to be constructed into it? They're going to do all that, but we're still going to inherit it. So that was, so the acceptance of privately constructed utilities, you know, we added that as, to, to round out that policy. I don't think I answered your question.
Not one bit.
Try me again, ask it again, I'm sorry.
So I understand.
Okay.
If that means anything. But go ahead.
Did you, you understand it? You understood, okay. Who is going to be responsible long-term for sewer pipes, water pipes in this procedure?
Ultimately, the city is responsible for public water and sewer. If it's private, it's private.
So what are you restricting?
We're basically saying, "The city's not going to accept utilities, roads, et cetera, for, into the, into the public, you know, for us to future maintain in the coastal high hazard area." I mean, that's kind of what this policy is, is alluding to. It's a policy, everything is malleable, but that, that's the intent.
I, I know what the intent is. What I am looking to do is you have a development that gets built? The developer leaves. It's our headache. How are we restricting it?
I think it's something that needs to be legitimately discussed as, when projects are coming through. That's why we're clarifying the policy and expanding it.
I mean, they can't leave money in escrow.
I mean, there's homeowners associations, there's, you know, there's a lot of private developments out there that the city does not maintain.
Yes, if they gate it.
Right.
If this isn't gated, this becomes our headache.
And that's why we, we're putting a policy in that says we shouldn't do it.
That's why I asked the question of what does restrict mean? It, it should just mean that it can't be done. He's my translator.
No, 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 hang on. I think there's a distinction between the comp plan and an ordinance.
Yes.
In terms of policy, maybe you could deal with it that way.
Yes, so, I mean, comprehensive plan policies are a higher level, they're not law, they are to be interpreted and applied. You know, your land development code or your strict ordinance is, it says, "Thou shalt or shalt not." So there is a hierarchy there. You know, restrict doesn't necessarily, you're right, it doesn't mean prohibit. Those are different words. So even before, you know, we didn't prohibit public investment in the coastal hazard area, precisely because we already have a lot of investment in there and we've got to maintain a lot of it. We can't just walk away from it. So it's a, it's a, I know y'all hate this term, but it's a balance. Sorry, city manager.
But to Commissioner Eisner's point, if he wanted to stop it, then that would be, have to be put into an ordinance.
Yes, ideally, it would be put into an ordinance.
You see the one's a policy, the other's a law.
I just want to make sure that we don't get involved in a project where pipes and sewer pipes are all under a building and then we have to go and, and deal with that down the road. However, that's done?
Yeah. I'll, I'll say more about it, but, yeah, okay. You got any?
I'm good.
All right, Commissioner Culias?
I have no comment.
I, I think the, that's where the balance gets in. And that's the problem I have. Because you could restrict it and you feel the way you do. And there's something else in the, in the project that kind of throws the balance in the other way. So that on balance, even though that's what the policy says, we can't do it, we wind up doing it anyway because it ameliorates and helps. In, in other words, there's a balance that this is so strong over here that satisfies what we really need for our community. It outbalances, it offsets what the restriction is that with regard to putting utilities in the coastal high hazard areas. That's why I don't like the, the, the balancing. But as you said, that that's in the counties, they use that terminology in the countywide plan, I would hope. Is that correct, or?
There's other, that list of balancing criteria, yes. That's straight out of the countywide plan. I think generally, I mean, the, the, restrict public investments such as roads, water, sewer, infrastructure, which would subsidize new private development in the coastal hazard area. I mean, that's, that's pretty cut and dry. You know, we shouldn't be spending city dollars to put in a sewer pipe that's going to serve a project in the coastal high hazard area. The next step, what I had, what I've added in, including the acceptance, acceptance of privately constructed water, sewer, roads. You know, and that might be a bridge too far, to be honest. But it's, I didn't want there to be a question because this is something that's already come up. And, you know, what constitutes public investment? And so I was trying to provide a bright line there. You know, if the developer wants to build it and they, you're going to have an association that's going to maintain it. Now, maybe, maybe to put a, you know, to put a nail in it. You know, they need a, a bond forever. I don't know. I mean, I'm not sure how you close that gap. I think to the mayor's point, you know, that probably needs to be more specific in an ordinance as to how that might take place. But again, this is meant to be a higher-level policy.
I, I, just to finish up, the, 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 it does give you some authority to deny something if you want to, but the, for me, the danger is this terminology balance. And Ms. Vincent, I was going to ask you, the, your friends at the county, I mean, your colleagues that you worked with, is there anybody there that understands this concept of balance, other than it, it provides a political kind of, I mean, to me, it smacks of a political thing. You can go this way, you can go that way, you can argue it some, one way or the other. And, but I don't know if there's a criteria that you can apply to this balance to in fact determine that the project is balanced. Let's say there's two counter-competing policies. You've got a project. It, it heavily favors one, it doesn't do much for the other. But you apply this balancing, you know, this, this balanced treatment or whatever, and it comes, and it, and you calculate it, and this is, it is balanced. Is there anything like that, or is this just a judgment thing that we're talking about?
I mean, it, you know, in some instances, there's, there may be. I can't think of anybody's comprehensive plans where they have like that specific of, of a criteria. I, I mean, I can tell you in applying comprehensive plans at the city, at the county, there, you're, you're always going to have competing policies. And it's the job generally of this board then to tease those apart and, and decide which policies are going to take
More important.
are more important, you know, and hopefully we can help as staff in, in that decision-making and...
Yeah, we're not going to solve the problem tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
We request a gate there so we don't have to deal with it. There you go.
All right. If there's, who's that? Vice Mayor Lund and Commissioner Carr?
I had, just for the record, I had one comment on this thing. It says, "Balance." So like our mayor, I have a, a problem with the Balance Act. But I have a solution. Why can't we just delete a balancing of from that thing? And it says, you know, "Such amendment application based on the following criteria as determined to be applicable." We still have to determine they're applicable. We don't necessarily have to balance them. There's no yin yang to that thing. We just remove the word and make it so that we get to pick A, B, C. You meet those, you don't meet those, and they're applicable to your situation. That's the way development should be done. Just as I mean, yin yang stuff is just...
So is your intent that you have to meet all of them or not? Because otherwise, you're back to, you're fundamentally, you're balancing them at that point. If they're applicable or they're not, or they, you meet them or they don't. So, I mean, it's either all or nothing, so, you know, I... This was not a section that I wrote, this was in the code now. I mean, I'm not, that's not something I, you know.
I understand you didn't write it, that doesn't necessarily mean it's good.
I'm, you know, and I can tell you that it is straight out of the countywide plan rules.
That doesn't necessarily mean it's good either.
You know, it's, I'm not prepared to debate that, this piece of it this evening. You know, we can, I can look at that in depth before second reading.
Fair enough. That's a good idea. Okay, all right. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I, so the Policy 3.1.2, that's in the coastal management element. It talks about the... about the, the roads and different aspects, but the other part that I want to talk about is like the wetlands portion of it. So, the example I'm thinking of is off-miers in the West Winds development. It was developed by a developer, then you've got a significant amount of wetlands that are owned by, I guess you'd say, a non-defunct, I don't know what it is, corporation that built the neighborhood but now is no longer there. So, you have a significant amount of wetlands that's not really being maintained by anybody. You've got overgrowth of Brazilian peppers. The neighborhood doesn't want to take it on, and now it's just kind of sitting there. So, with that aspect, is there an opportunity to, for the city to take that over in future developments? If it's not platted to the HOA, which I, I think at times you may have done some language where the HOA automatically takes it over, the, the wetland portion of it, or the right-of-way areas? I don't know, I'm just, I'm thinking that one through because that one's a little unique.
That one's got a lot of implications and legal things involved that we're going to be taking up with the new city attorney when it comes. There's, there's a lot of issues with that.
I'm just using that one as an example specifically. How do we avoid something like this in the future?
No, no, he's, there's a history to a lot of this.
Yeah, that's, that, the whole thing, when we deal with this one, how we could do it, should be a policy that we're going to set.
Okay.
That, that policy hopefully will come out with what we can do with this one and putting forward something to prevent it from ever happening again because, because it's been a problem for a while and it's got to be resolved.
There's one I dealt with as city manager, he's dealing with the exact same one.
Okay. Got it, all right. I just want to make sure there's some type of, something's happening, so it sounds like there is, and I'm good with that, thank you.
Okay. If there's no further...
Motion approved, Mayor.
Comments, may I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion approved.
Oh, you did, okay. Did we get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, both of you. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lott?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay. Did we miss anything tonight? I think that's it, okay. Ms. Vincent, these last two, we're not going to see those again till February, Mar, or...
Probably the first meeting in February.
Okay, all righty. Let's go to board and staff comments. Major Ruggiero, anything?
Nope.
Okay. See, city manager, of course.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Jacob?
Captain, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lott?
No comment.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Salzman for stepping in as a city attorney tonight.
My pleasure.
I enjoyed your comments, and I think you did a great job advising the board, so I appreciate your comments tonight.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner?
I just want to thank the staff and the city. That was a fantastic Christmas parade, and I enjoyed every minute of it. And just want to thank all involved, it was really nice. And I actually got to scream out, "I love Tarpon Springs." And it was nice, felt good.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yeah, the, the, the Christmas parade was awesome. Thank you, Mr. Salzman, for sitting in for today's meeting. Thank you, staff, for all the hard work on all these, all these changes that we're coming up with. We know it's a lot of work and just, we're getting a lot of stuff done. It's a good thing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to continue thanking, I mean, we're just honestly, towards the end, with the, moving into holiday seasons, there's just a huge amount of effort that's going into just keeping up with the holidays, and we've still got more to do, and, and then we're not going to be really out of the woods until after January 6th. And we've got a couple of large community events coming up here towards the middle of December, and of course, with Epiphany on the 6th. So, I'm very proud of what we're doing as far as staying on top of that. I can tell you the crowds are just phenomenal, there's, I've never seen them this large, but what's most important is everybody's got a smile on their face in these crowds. So, it means a lot, and it kind of tells you of, of the mood of the community and realizing that we've still got a lot of work to do with ironing out some of these issues that we dealt with this evening. But nevertheless, it, it's very hopeful that we'll get back into doing something positive and moving the city forward, I'm hoping, right after the, after January. Mr. Salzman, thank you for your patience in listening to us and putting up with the city attorney discussions and reviews and evaluations. I think the city manager hit the nail on the head, and he said, "What, we haven't done this in 26 years?" So, anyway, it, it's a learning experience for all of us, so that's all I have. Meeting adj, you didn't have anything, right? Did I ask you if you had anything? I'm sorry.
Nothing.
Okay. Meeting adjourned at 10:41.
See you later.